Good morning. Welcome to Lyon County Board of County Commissioners, Thursday, December 21st, 2023. It is 9:01 in the last meeting of 2023 for the county commission. Today's agenda action will be taking all items unless otherwise noted. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The board reserves the right to take items in different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration. Items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based on viewpoint. Board of County Commissioners convening as other boards. Members of the Board of County Commissioners also serve as the Liquor Board, Central Lyon Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting may convene as any of those boards as indicated on this or a separately posted agenda. This meeting may break between 11:30 and 1:30 for lunch. We do have the county lunch today, so we'll be breaking for sure unless we finish beforehand. Today's roll call, we have Commissioner Jacobson, I believe, on Zoom. He said he would be on Zoom.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Jacobson's not on yet. He's working on logging in.
Okay. I do have Commissioner Keller, Commissioner Henderson, Commissioner Hendricks, and Commissioner Hockaday in chambers and waiting for Commissioner Jacobson to join us. Item number two, invocation given by Nathan Sam Whistler, United Methodist. Mr. Whistler?
Please rise. Good morning, commissioners and folks. Thank you for having me. But to wish you all a Merry Christmas and your families. Let us pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we come before you this morning. Give in your thanks for all your great mercies and all that we have and are. We thank you for the representatives and authentic leaders, men and women who love your people and co-walk with them, who feel their pain and share their joys, who dream their dreams and strive to accompany them to their common goal. We look to you for your guidance. In our humble approach, we gather in person and through our digital connections, we ask for your blessing upon this meeting time and this assembly of community leaders, the season makers, volunteers, and concerned citizens. We give thanks and pray for those who serve in every capacity, their community, their country, their state, their and our political leaders, our military, our emergency responders, our law enforcement, our healthcare workers, and our educators, and those who do the thankless jobs that keep us comfortable and sustained. Lord, in your mercy, hear our prayer. Grant this assembly of men and women the wisdom to govern at best, the interest of the citizens of community that they serve. Hear our humble intercession and help us to keep in the forefront of our minds your people, your creation, and your love. That year will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Remove any hatred, prejudice, contempt for those for those who are different, not of our own race, color, gender, class, or creed. That departing from everything that estranges and divides, help us to love one another. Teach us to see people by the light and the love of the faith we profess. Believe and understand that we may look within ourselves. All our generous judgments, all presumptuous claims that recognizing the needs and rightful claims of others, we may remove old hatreds and rivalries and begin new understandings. May our joys be great as we come to the end of this Advent season, looking to the coming light and birth of your Son Jesus. Be with us in our families as we gather this Christmas. Keep us safe and deliver us from every evil. Grant us peace, we pray, to your Son Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Thank you.
Please join in pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
Thank you. Item four, public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. It's anticipated that public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda item, agenda action item, but before the board takes any action. Do we have any public comment?
Chairman and commissioners, for your record, Jeremy Drew, Principal Resource Specialist. I don't have any formal presentation for you here today. I'm here for moral support on the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, but did want to take this opportunity to thank you and the commissioners and all your staff for the working relationship we've had over the years. We really appreciate it, and I also wanted to thank some of your staff, particularly Ms. Allison, for her help on the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, as well as the Fire Chiefs and the Nevada Division of Forestry. So, thank you very much. I'll have to step out after this meeting for a sage grouse meeting back in Carson, the gift that keeps giving, but I wanted to make sure we took this opportunity to wish you all a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Merry Christmas to you, too. Any other public comment? See anything on Zoom? Nobody else lining up?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to note that Commissioner Jacobson has called in. He's the phone number there on the...
Okay. I see 7267, bottom corner.
And it's nine oh, it was 9:07.
Okay, thank you. We'll put that on the record. He did join a spy phone at 9:07. Item number five for possible action review and adoption of agenda. Commissioners, any input on the agenda? Any public input on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda. Commissioner Keller.
Motion to approve the agenda.
By the second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Keller, second by Commissioner Hendricks.
Yes.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
All right. Five zero. Motion passes. The window will stay as it is. We have time certain, item six, six A. 9:05, we are at 9:09 for possible action review and approve or resolution of the 2023 Lyon County Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Presentation. Ms. Allison.
Good morning, Commissioner. Okay. It's my honor to present what has been a month-long, several months-long project, mostly coordinated by the Lyon County Local Emergency Planning Committee. The Lyon County Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, let's see, not working. Thank you. Um. To start, mitigation is a core function of the emergency management mission. By legal definition, it's any sustained action to reduce, eliminate, or eliminate the long-term risk to human life and property post-hazards. But in reality, mitigation can be anything as small as upsizing a culvert that's not running efficiently to a large capital improvement project. According to the National Institute of Building Sciences Natural Hazard Mitigation SAVES 2019 report, it's a mouthful. Every $1 in federal grants invested in mitigation can save up to $6 in recovery post-disaster. So, by the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act as amended by the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000, local jurisdictions are required to complete a hazard mitigation plan every five years in order to be eligible for certain pre-disaster funding. And then as of last year, but effective this year in April, they released new guidance. So, this plan may look quite a bit different from what has been approved in the past. Our last plan was approved in 2018. We included callouts for each of the FEMA requirements to make it easy to review where we align with FEMA standards. So, what's new in this plan? We've extended, expanded the participating jurisdictions. The last round in 2018, it was just the county, the cities of Fernley and Yarlington, as well as Central Lyon County Fire Protection District. I have all of the jurisdictions participating this year in a upcoming slide. Also new to this plan are hazards profiled were expanded to include emerging threats, FEMA National Risk Index, as well as a new system that FEMA's been implementing, Community Disaster Resilience Zones, a new app signed into law in 2022, which identifies the most vulnerable census tracts in the nation, and Lyon County is home to one. So, here are all the participating jurisdictions that officially signed on as hazard mitigation planning partners. This is not the comprehensive list of partners that participated in the planning process or on the planning team, but well, these are the agencies that will be eligible for funding, mitigation funding over the next five years. So, we have the county, of course, if approved today. The cities, city of Fernley approved their resolution at the city council meeting last night. All four fire protection districts, the Walker River Irrigation District, Carson Water Subconservancy District, and the Mason and Smith Valley Conservation Districts. So, here's the mitigation planning team. At the forefront is community members and then elected officials, coordinated and facilitated by my office, Office of Emergency Management. And then all the planning workshops were held in public forum as part of the LEPSE meetings. And then we had regular one-on-one coordination with various government departments and agencies that contributed to the plan, as well as external organizations. You'll also receive a presentation on the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, which provided a lot of data and insight into our plan for the wildland fire hazard. So, here's a list of the required planning elements that we had to provide. What makes this the 300-page plan? If it were up to all of us, we'd probably shrink that down to 100 pages, but FEMA's our favorite federal agency, and they always require extensive information from us. So, we had to have a planning process, a risk assessment, mitigation strategy, how we were going to maintain the plan, update the plan, and formally adopt the plan. Here's the process that the planning team came up with. Developed community profiles for each of the participating jurisdictions, identified hazards, which hazards impact our community. We're not going to profile hazard that's predominantly in coastal United States. That doesn't impact Lyon County, even though we had a one-off hurricane impact this year. Ranked hazards and developed hazard profiles for those that were high and very high risk of potential impacts. Gathered community input. It's very valuable to hear the community's voice on the impacts of these hazards. We reviewed what are our current capabilities to prevent impact and risk of hazards in the community, and then we drafted this plan and our strategy score. In each community profile, including Lyon counties, there's a description of our county, our governance model, so the commission, as well as all the departments in our structure, demographics, what does our community look like, and then land use and development trends. What are we going to look like in five years? And how will that impact potential hazard risk? So, here are the hazards that were selected for this next five-year round and planning cycle included in the plan. All those in blue are the new to this year. So, reservoirs were included in dam canal failure, especially with irrigation district signing on as a partner. It was important to include that there. Terrorism and weapons of mass destruction was expanded to include broader criminal acts, economic supply chain incidents, no surprise there, water, wastewater emergency hazards, energy emergencies, transportation incidents, including aircraft and rail, and technological emergencies in bringing cyber. We're all new to the plan. There's a quick snapshot of the rubric and how we got to the hazard ranking. Each hazard was ranked by probability, magnitude, frequency, onset, and duration. And this is where they landed. Because all of the participating jurisdictions did this together, all the rankings will look the same across the board, but we have to break it out per FEMA standards. But at the very top, criminal acts and terrorism and wildland fire, closely followed by severe storm, extreme snowfall, landslide, epidemic infectious disease, and so on. Here's the National Risk Index that I mentioned. This is where we rank according to federal agencies in comparison to other jurisdictions. This formula is, reflects expected annual losses due to hazards, social vulnerability, and community resilience. So, Lyon counties and NRI, we are somewhere relatively moderate compared to other, like jurisdictions. And then new, as I mentioned, these, what we're calling cedars in our world. So, in September of this year, one of our census tracts, I think only about four in Nevada were selected as one of the nation's most vulnerable jurisdictions. So, our census tract is the one that's about north, including north Yarinton through Obuska, just north of Obuska, all the way east to Churchill County. So, the ranking was based on a number of factors, but this will be a benefit to us in future funding applications because they are tying in. An example would be, instead of a 25% cost share, we would do, we would have a 10% cost share. And so, any project that we would propose for certain funding, including HUD, NOFOs, and other federal funding opportunities are going to create a a benefit for cedar zones. And this could include all countywide projects that directly benefit that census tract. So, it doesn't have to only be us. Something to keep in the back of our mind. So, for each of the hazard profiles we developed, it includes a brief description of the hazard, the history of previous occurrences, extent and probability, potential impacts from future climate conditions, and our vulnerability broken out by each jurisdiction. The county may have different vulnerability than the city, and so on. So, here's just a quick snapshot included wildland fire, because a lot of the information we pulled for this specific hazard comes out of the CWPP, which we'll also hear a presentation on. So, the vulnerability rating, it ranks very high. There's a brief description of wildland fire. This exact table we sourced from the CWPP, but it's some of the information we provided on previous hazards. Get through these quickly. Extent and probability, we know that these hazards are going to impact our county, but to what extent probability? So, each hazard has that listed out as well. And potential impacts from future climate conditions. So, for these sections, we met closely with the National Weather Service. For the most part, we don't know, but if climate conditions are to change, here's what we can expect. And so, that was laid out in the plan in each section. Here's the vulnerability by jurisdiction for this particular hazard. Lyon County ranked high. For the most part, Lyon County had high risk of impacts because we will see labor, equipment, material losses if we experience any of these hazards somewhere in the county. There we go. There's the summary. Higher, very high vulnerability or ranking. And then directly next to that is the county's overall vulnerability. We are vulnerable to hazards. There's no way around it because of our jurisdiction and the landscape. Some of the smaller participating jurisdictions, like the conservation districts, may not have high vulnerability rating. We had to list out our current capabilities, as I mentioned. That included legal and regulatory, administrative, technical, financial, our COO plans, and our participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. We conducted community outreach. This is a FEMA requirement, but also because community engagement was at the forefront by having an online public survey, community meetings, and then there was a public comment period, and we emailed and mailed letters to all our key stakeholders, including neighborhood jurisdictions. Please provide input. Great feedback in the community survey, and we had written feedback during the public comment period from residents as well. Here's a quick snapshot of the findings from the online survey. The top five hazards the community experienced in the last 10 years. There's no surprise here, drought, severe storms, epidemic infectious disease, economic supply chain challenges, and flooding. But the hazards, however, that are the highest level of community concern moving forward are wildland fire, drought, flood, severe storms, water, wastewater emergencies, and then again, economic supply chain emergencies. And there on the right, we asked the community, what are their preferred methods of communication for emergency messaging? This one surprised me, that email and postal mail came out on the top over social media methods, but Facebook Sheriff's Office does a great job of getting messaging outs right up there, the fire protection districts, internet searches, and so on. So, where do we go from here? The planning committee set goals. This is a ridiculous number of goals. 15 is a lot, but FEMA standards require us to have at least one goal per hazard. That's why it's listed this way. If we're up to our team, we probably have three achievable goals. And our actions that align with those goals. I pulled out a few. There's a comprehensive list in the plan. But establish a budget and identify funding opportunities for mitigation outreach, including the possibility of funding a county mitigation coordinator to facilitate project implementation. Continue to adopt building codes and ordinances that protect people and structures from hazards. Collaborate and support Community Wildfire Protection Plan and Flood Mitigation or Flood Management Plan. Develop a plan to formalize and construct appropriate regional emergency operations center and a regional communications dispatch center. Update regional emergency plans, including evacuation and sheltering. Support wildland fire fuels reduction programs that we specifically called out mitigation actions that have been listed in the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. Identify funding and develop sponsors to implement recommendations in the north and south Dayton drainage area master plans, as well as funding for additional drainage area master plans so that we cover all communities within our jurisdiction. Secure critical county infrastructure, such as water and wastewater from cybersecurity and other threats. Trending nationwide, there are cyber attacks against wastewater infrastructure. So, that's been high on the radar. Collaborate with private GIS map and location-based service providers to reduce the time it takes to close roads and report hazards and identify safe alternatives to disasters. So, there are a handful we're looking to work on. While we're here today, we present a resolution for possible adoption. The jurisdiction will then submit to our state mitigation officer at Nevada Division of Emergency Management and FEMA Region 9 for review of compliance, and then we'll post the final plan to our website. That's it. We won't take any questions.
Commissioners, questions? I did have one. On about halfway through, we talked about criminal acts and terrorism being high risk. Where did that come from? I mean, we don't have a military base. We don't have any national sites.
So, the definition has been expanded because in the emergency management world, our role is to support anything that scales outside of normal day-to-day response. And so, things like acts of violence, civil unrest can all fall under that umbrella, and that's why they've shifted away from just the definition of terrorism and what is a mass destruction because it could be something under that broader definition. And that's included in the plan. What's in that definition? I don't have it in front of me.
Well, it's because, you know, I've attended the local emergency planning meetings, and I don't recall it coming up as, oh, my gosh, you know, it's a high risk. That terrorist, we've got a lot of criminal acts that are going to do damage to the county, and we're going to need mitigation of some type in the future. So, I was just, you know, I saw that, and then you look at the the slide, a couple of slides further, and we noticed that it's, yeah, it's fire and the normal fire flood thing such as that. So, I just wondered where that came from in the plan, and I appreciate your input on that. Any other questions? Any public?
Just a comment.
Comment, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the presentation. And wow, what a lot of work you guys did to put it that. So, good job. Thank you very much.
Any public comment? We see Amanda Bernand hand is up.
Good morning, Amanda Bernand, and I wanted to thank them for preparing this document and also for allowing the public to participate. And I would just hope this is carried forward and relevant information in this plan is disseminated once again to the communities and residents. There are residents that would like to better prepare for these types of situations and events, and it would be nice to know how we could do that. It's a large document. I did try to read most of it, but just posting to the county website, I don't feel is enough. So, I don't know, maybe perhaps additional community presentations or maybe even presentations again at advisory board meetings. But somehow, there's a lot of good information in here. It's somehow figure out how to disseminate it without reading the entire document. Thank you.
Ms. Allison, thank you very much. I know you did a lot of work on this, a lot of meetings, a lot of input. Do appreciate everything in your presentation today.
Chairman Hockaday?
Yes.
Mr. Rob.
Oh.
Ah, Roger.
Yeah, okay. Right. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. Sorry again for not being there. Ms. Allison, nice job. I want to share in Chairman Hockaday's comments. And I totally listened and understand the hazard ranking and vulnerability ranking a little bit better after what you responded to Chairman Hockaday. And then I just wanted to thank you and also getting the public's input. So, well done, Ms. Allison. Thank you.
All right. Looks like we have action review and approve a resolution. Do I have a motion on that?
Mr. Chair, if I may, real quick.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to echo what the board has said about Taylor's work on this. This is normally a multi-year process, and, you know, it's often hired out to consultants. We were able to complete it in a compressed timeframe, thanks to Taylor's leadership and work on this. He's put in a lot of extra hours, so just want to, want to make sure that we mention that. Thank you.
And thank you for that comment. I know she did put in a lot of hours. Okay. Move to approve the resolution to adopt.
Do we have a resolution?
It's on the back page.
Yep. Back page. Yep. Do you want to approve the resident?
Do you want to read into the record?
Yeah, let's read that into the record.
Okay. I will read it for you.
Okay.
Okay, resolution 23 dot whatever, adopting the 2023 Lyon County Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Whereas the Lyon County Board of County Commissioners recognizes the threat that natural hazards pose to the people and property within Lyon County. And whereas Lyon County has prepared a multi-hazard mitigation plan hereby known as the 2023 Lyon County Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. And whereas Lyon County has prepared the 2023 Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan in accordance with federal laws, including the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act as amended, the National Flood Insurance Act of 1968 as amended, and the National Dam Safety Program Act as amended. And whereas the 2023 Lyon County Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan identifies mitigation goals and identifies mitigation goals and actions to reduce or eliminate long-term risks to people in Lyon County from the impacts of future hazards and disasters. And whereas adoption by the Lyon County Board of County Commissioners demonstrates its commitment to hazard mitigation and achieving the goals outlined in the twenty-twenty-three Lyon County Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Now therefore be it resolved that Lyon County Board of County Commissioners adopts the twenty-twenty-three Lyon County Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan for mitigation planning period between the years twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-eight. Be it further resolved that the twenty-twenty-three Lyon County Regional Mitigation Plan may require revisions to meet the plan approval requirements, changes occur right after adoption and will not require Lyon County Board of County Commissioners' approval. Be it finally resolved that subsequent plan updates following the approval period for this plan will require separate adopted resolutions.
Okay. Second.
No, he just read it in. He didn't make a motion.
I did. I will if you want.
Yeah, I would accept the resolution.
It doesn't matter. I move to adopt the twenty-twenty-three Lyon County Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan as presented.
Second.
All right. So we'll get back to motion by Commissioner Keller, second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, I have five zero motion passes on the resolution. Uh, six B, time certain, we're certain past time nine oh five for possible action review and adopt the twenty-twenty-three Lyon County Community Wildfire Protection Plan on Henderson Resource Concept, Inc. Project Manager and Ron Boyer, Nevada Division of Forestry State Fire Management Officer. So presentations are, you're up.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Don Henderson, Senior Resource Specialist with Resource Concepts. Uh, we were retained by the Nevada Division of Forestry to lead this effort to develop an updated Community Wildfire Protection Plan, otherwise known as CWPP, which I will probably refer to several times. For those in the audience that are adept in the internet, we do have this, this plan, the updated plan on our website. It's noted at the top there. It's very fine. I will repeat it at the end of my presentation, but the address is www.rci-inv.com forward slash Lyon CWPP. So you can access it there. So what are we here for? I, I, I think it's kind of important to point out here that this planning effort did parallel the hazard mitigation plan update, which was recently discussed. I think we started a little bit sooner. But we found out the county was updating their habitat mitigation plan, and we certainly joined in that effort and included Taylor Allison in our planning team. And it was very helpful. It's quite convinced. It's very interesting that they worked out this way. But what is a CWPP or Community Wildfire Protection Plan? Basically, they were developed as we started having more and more wildfires in the West. And it was capsulated in the twenty oh two Healthy Forest Restoration Act. And the CWPP is modeled to be a collaborative and strategic community plan that recommends wildfire reduction measures to protect people, property and natural resources. It is geared, quite frankly, the requirements for it under that act to more of a local planning, a ground ground roots, root ground, uh, planning activity, mostly at the neighborhood or community level. Here in Nevada, we've adopted a model where we do county-wide community wildfire protection plans. So it's a little different, but collaboration is the key and so this isn't the first CWPP for Lyon County. In two thousand and four, there was a statewide initiative was done, which every community and every county in Nevada had a CWPP. At that time, our focus was primarily what they called the wildland urban interface, which is where communities and neighborhoods of but wildlands or open lands primarily in Nevada managed or administered by the BLM or Forest Service. So we, we did that in twenty 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 oh four. We did a plan in Lyon County was included. In two thousand and twenty-two, the Nevada Division of Forestry secured a FEMA hazard mitigation grant to update the twenty-twenty-four CWPP. Now, why is that important? Much like your hazard mitigation plan, a CWPP has a life at this point of ten years and this needs to be updated. Why is that important? You must have an active and a current and effective CWPP to be able to access federal cost share funding to implement projects on the ground. I'm a little behind on my slides. So what was our planning process? Not quite as formal as your habitat mitigation plan, but still it was pretty rigorous. In this instance, the Nevada Division of Forestry completed an updated fire risk assessment for the county as a whole and around the counties and neighborhoods in Lyon County. RCI reviewed this risk assessment with the four county fire protection districts to include local expertise and insights. This was quite a venting process that we went through on this, on this new assessment. And we had a concurrence, uh, I should say there was lots of changes made to the India uh, initial assessment that was included. And in February of this year, we reached a concurrence between Nevada Division of Forestry and the four fire districts is what current ratings were. At that point, Resource Concepts started developing and writing a CWPP. Once, once we knew what the threats were and where they were, we started developing. We also have requirements, much like the FEMA process of, of having a structured planning process and trying to include community inputs the best we can. The way we handled it in this countywide was we developed a community core team, which was primarily formed of agencies, allied agencies would get involved with wildfire either suppression and more planning and mitigation. Entities that were included in that included the four fire protection districts in the county, Lyon County Emergency Manager, Nevada Division of Forestry, Bureau of Land Management, US Forest Service, Nevada Department of Wildlife, and the three county conservation districts, Dayton Valley, Mason Valley and Smith Valley. The Native American tribes were also invited, invited to join the CWTT, I'm sorry, CCT. And, uh, but none actually, they participated, I think, I think they listened in. They read our reports, but none participated directly in this planning process. When we had a working draft document that we were ready to go out publicly with, there were several things we did to try to invite public review and input. That included, we hosted four public workshops that were held at each, at each fire district in October. Overall, we had about twenty-one individuals that attended the four workshops. Uh, we had good discussions when people showed up and they helped a lot find to the plan. Uh, we also to try to reach out to the community. As I mentioned earlier, we, uh, had a project website that we put the draft on and we had a survey function in that where people could comment back to the draft document via the internet. And the county to, uh, Ms. Ms. Allison helped us communicate those various venues. So what were the results that we came out of? Uh, there were eleven communities in the counties that were assessed in twenty twenty-two. A total of a hundred and four individual neighborhood assessments were completed. What is unique about this assessment that we didn't have in two thousand and four was in two thousand and four, we were only looking at the wildland or urban interface or that half mile perimeter around each community. What was new with this and a new assessment tool that Nevada Division of Forestry rolled out is we also assess wildfire hazards within the communities or the neighborhoods. And that excuse me, that's a powerful tool that we didn't have before. So basically the results were in the Mason Valley and the Smith Valley, we did not receive any neighborhood risk assessment ratings that exceeded a moderate level. We did have some in, in the other neighborhoods. And most of them were in central Lyon. Quite frankly, you had Station thirty-two downtown Silver Springs fur to the river, which is basically Silver Springs down to the river. And then Lanahan Road and McCallan Peak Road uh, in Mound House came out high and of course that's that one road in, one road out neighborhood near the Gypson Mine there in Mound House. The fifth one that came out was Vine Street in Fernley. Came out as a high fire wildfire hazard. So questions are, we have a good assessment that there was concurrence on with the fire districts. What do we do with this information? So we went through our own planning process to talk about it, to figure out what the, what steps could be taken to try to reduce wildfire risk in not only these high hazard areas, but in, in communities in general. Countywide recommendations and, and I should mention that all of these recommendations are based primarily on that first bullet, the premise that primary responsibility for protection of homes and responsibility lies with the landowner. So our recommendations are how do we help the landowners help themselves and protect their own properties and reduce the wildfire risk? So what we suggested on a countywide basis, which is probably a model for most community plans is for the fire districts and the counties to work with the Nevada Fire Adapted, I'm sorry. The India Fire Adapted Nevada Program to establish active firewise USA and fire adapted communities for the purpose of developing and implementing community plans and projects. Primarily geared toward development of residential and commercial property and dispense dispensable space. And also with our, in, in our wooies or in the wildfire, uh, urban interface, what projects are needed outside of private land to reduce fire from aggressing from the public lands. And I will tell you that the, the federal agencies are active doing fire fuel reduction projects. They're looking for community plans that they can join in with and link in with. That's a high priority for them. If we had a community that came up with a plan that needed some work on public lands, I relatively certain that federal agencies will respond and join in in that effort and help cost share in so forth. So that's our countywide recommendation. We also developed recommendations by each fire district. And I'll start first. With Central Lion Fire District who has a very active wildfire prevention program already. Uh, they've already done a hundred and ten acres of completed fuel reduction. They went out and got a FEMA grant themselves and started a program. And Stagecoach and Mark Twain on Fresh Start Urban Fuels Reduction Project, helping those people take care of their large lots and reduce fire hazards within it. Remove some of the accumulated trash that may have been built up over the year. They're working on developing a strategic plan outlining the district's community wildfire protection plan over the next five years. And the district has a very ambitious project to construct about fifty-five miles of fuel breaks along the highway fifty corridor, six mile road, US Parkway and several other places within the county. So they're making hay. They're making hay in the central line. Fire Protection District. For the North Line, the priorities there were identified as updating the evacuation plan. Work cooperatively with the irrigation district to address fire fuels in abandoned irrigation ditches in a cooperative manner. Work with the county to improve the access on both sides of the canal to improve emergency access and evacuation. There's quite a bit of development along that canal, as you know. And some, some places are restricted on evacuation and even getting suppression and identified fires. Uh, they have a very active, uh, trailer program where they loan trailers out to, to residents and a wood chipper and, uh, for people to remove their own fuels and they'd like to have a second dump trailer to facilitate that and a wood chipper. And, uh, it's a priority within the fire district to start up a regular community cleaning. Relying on shareholders and businesses to help sponsor. For the Mason Valley Fire Protection District. If you look at the fire records, Mason Valley Fire District doesn't have a lot of wildfires and that's primarily because it's largely developed for agricultural and is irrigated and the fuels are managed by the landlord. The one issue that is a concern to the fire district is the, uh, is the Walker River Corridor. And particularly in the Walker River State Park, that's a long ways from the fire protection suppression. And there's lots of accumulated fuels there. So that's a priority for the district is to work with the landowners and state parks to do some fuel reduction along the river corridor. Finally, uh, Smith Alley Fire District, their priorities. Well, I should mention, they also have a very active fires prevention code primarily relating to recent fires up along the Fidenup Mountains, Upper Colony Road. Lots have been going on there, both with the federal agencies and with the conservation district to try to get those burn areas back to a condition where, where they wouldn't readily burn. Again, and there's some active programs going, continuing on with that. But in addition to that, uh, the one community in Smith Valley, excuse me, that was not assessed and included as part of the CWPP was the Desert Creek Community, which is getting to be pretty robust neighborhood today. So that was a priority for, for this district is to do a risk assessment for Desert Creek, go through the mitigation planning process and add that to the county CWPP. They too have a dump volunteer loan trailer program that they like to expand. Their equipment's getting old and they would like to update that. And, uh, they're also looking into the feasibility and possible, possible funding sources, maybe locate a new station to the south end of Smith Valley to reduce emergency response times, particularly down in that Desert Creek area. So that was my brief synopsis of this plan. I do not have a resolution for you to sign. But I guess we're kind of hoping as part of this process and this review, if, if you feel that this report deserves it, is that we would like the board to approve and adopt the CWPP and make it a county priority, if you will, by adding it to the, the habitat or excuse me, the hazard mitigation plan that was just approved. And, uh, hopefully have the county staff include this new CWPP on the county website and along with the database, the hazard mitigation database. So with that cert, I'm willing to take the questions.
Sir, Commissioner Keller.
I was looking at your, uh, your assessment in North Lyon County. And, uh, we've got a lands bill in right now to, to pull it all the way down to Thomas Silver Springs. Was that brought in to where we're going to get, uh, some fire breaks and stuff like that? Is any thought gone into that for the industrial?
Not as far as part of this planning effort, or identified as a priority that between, between Fernley and Silver Springs, then we're calling it off. It's not to say part, part of your challenge here, of course, you have Silver Springs, it's in central line with this week. And you have Fernley in.
Right. They come all the way to Silver Springs, but they're, they're opening themselves up to a lot because that's going to become, once the lands bill goes through, if it does, that's going to put a lot of pressure on them because they're responsible for the whole. The whole thing.
One of the changes that we, we noticed that there was some evacuation access issues in the Silver Street area particularly, we had some clients or some residents come out during the, the workshop and noted that our assessment was a little light on some of the risk on limitations relative to excavation and we upgraded that assessment tool. But to answer your question, there's no specific plans included in the CWPP that builds fire breaks and maintaining fire breaks between Fernley and Silver Springs at this point, short of what, short of what the central line. Short of what the Central Lion District is planning along US Parkway, Highway fifty corridor.
Yeah, I'd like to see them continue it on up so that at least it's it's took care of or at least thought of. Thank you.
Any further questions? I just wanted to say thank you very much for your. Work on that. You're out in the community a lot. Uh you're down in Smith Valley, Mason Valley, um ended those meetings and uh. Glad that we we got some community input. Uh looking forward to doing some work there in the Desert Creek area in in the future. Um contact those people and you know, see what we can get them uh get them on board.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate those comments. The one thing I will tell you is the Forest Service is actively doing. Habitat improvement projects there primarily reduce canyon juniper trees for sage grass habitat. But they are willing, I mean, they're right there around the community. So now would be a prime time to develop some plans. How we can take those federal plans and wrap it into what the community needs are.
Thank you. Any public uh looks like Amanda Burnett?
Morning again, um. As I'm one of the many homeowners in Lion County in the wooie in this area. And in an area that naturally is meant to burn with a cycle and we suppress these fires for about a hundred years. I am very concerned with fuels buildup, wildland fires and the impacts of the people that live here. And I just wanted to say this is a well-written document. It's a good synopsis of the existing conditions and the changes needed and also some excellent ideas. I I think it's great that um interacting with the federal projects is um great too. Um again, I'd like to thank the authors of this document. Um but they not only provided the public meetings, but they listened to what was said in these public meetings. What the public said and and where they could, they incorporated the changes into the document, which is very um refreshing and very nice to see. Um I do have one small comment. Um you know, this was a, it's a ten-year plan period. It was updated ten years ago. And the the conditions in the in our area have and will continue to dramatically change. And they're not even gonna resemble, some areas won't even resemble what this plan has within the next ten-year timeframe. So with all the development occurring in our area. Um some of the community definitions won't even resemble what they say. And so as this is a plan, um I'm just curious if the strategy will follow um to allow for updating this plan. Outside of the next ten-year period so that we can keep up with all the changes that are occurring. Uh thank you and just Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you.
Would you like me to respond?
Sure, go ahead.
It's it's a living document. We we appreciate Miss Mrs. Brit- Brit- Brennan's uh. Comments. She participated in the workshop and public comments. You know, the way I look at this is as soon as we write this, it's outdated. It's a living document. It's intended to be updated repeatedly. That's one of the reasons why we really like the county to take ownership into it and include it as part of their uh. Uh their FEMA hazard mitigation plan and keep it updated, working with partners like the BLM. Uh Nevada Division of Forestry, the Conservation Districts and the citizens. So it's, I call it a second generation document. Is it perfect? No. It's out of date already? Yes, it's gonna be updated and it should be a living document. And we hope the county will play a role to make that happen.
Thank you. Comment?
Thank you, Don. Uh Rambo A Nevada Division of Forestry, uh State Fire Management Officer for the record. I just also want to echo what Don's saying. Um it's a living document. It can be updated anytime. And that will constitute an update. It really should be tiered to your hazard mitigation plan. It is every much as important as. Um what uh was presented for the hazard mitigation plan and should be tiered to that. And updated in uh every time the hazard mitigation plan gets updated every three to five years. You get gen- you get grant funding to do that. It should also be incorporated and updated at the same time. And hopefully participation from the um fire protection districts to update their portions. Anytime they're doing projects, anytime they're adding projects, need to go into that document. It doesn't have a fancy name like hazard countywide hazard mitigation plan, right? And we look at it community wildfire protection plan, but that that title is very, the same importance as that hazard mitigation plan. And it should be, it should live together and be updated constantly. And that that's, I should just share that. And then Nevada Division of Forestry is more than welcome to help um participate in them updates. With uh uh protection districts and projects and applications for grant funding. For uh Wild Landerman Interface Grant Funding, Community Wildfire Defense Grant Funding. And our hazardous fuels grants programs. So um I just want to share that piece.
Thank you. Any questions?
Good morning, my hockaday?
Yes, Commissioner Jacobson.
Oh, thank you. I didn't mean to cut off somebody. I just wanted to thank Mr. Henderson and Resource Concepts for their work on this along with the uh. Division of Wildma- uh Forestry. Thank you.
Okay.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Page. I'm a Yarrington Nevada resident. Um I I support, have always supported both hazard mitigation and wildlife wildfire protection plan. What I want to address with the board today is the plan is great. Um but I think it's time for Lion County and the seventeen other counties to work with NACO. Put pressure upon both the state legislature and Congress to ensure that we are properly. Funding our wildfire protection programs, i.e. having VLM, US Forest Service, NDF. Year-round prepared to respond to wildfires. If you don't know it, within your county, you have Dayton State Park, LaHunt State Park Weeks. And the Walker River um State Park. All those have heavy fuel loads. If there's a local fire, it's your local fire protection district that's responding. You're going to be in those areas for quite some time before NDF and the federal folks. Can rally up the troops. The challenge has been over the last thirty years is we have these wa- wine hand conflicts in in uh Mound House. Two of them. Um a number of wildfires in Smith Valley over the years, and it takes quite a while for the federal resources to get there and do their thing. You are tying up your local resources on those wildfires and are not able to respond to local emergencies. I know Chief Harvey, myself and other chiefs in the region have discussed with our our. Delegation, the need to have year-round staffing and proper staffing has fallen upon deaf ears. So I would just suggest it. Um maybe maybe with NACO in the future to address those issues. Thank you.
Thank you for your suggestion. Anything further? If not, then we have uh an adoption. Of the Lion County Community Wildlife Plan.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
I I moved that we adopt the twenty twenty-three Lion County Community Wildlife Protection Plan.
All right, have a motion by Commissioner Henderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hendrick seconds. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right. Mission passes five zero. Uh. It is exactly ten o'clock. Uh thank you, sir.
Don Henderson, again for the record, real quickly. Since you approved it, there is a signature page in this document. Would you like to direct being staff on who you'd like to sign on behalf of Lion County on this document? Would it be you, Mister Chairman?
Yeah, I'll be the one signing.
Thank you.
In AM, just clicked over. Time certain for possible action. Um approved fiscal year twenty twenty-three annual comprehensive financial report, which has been audited by Shireen and Company. In accordance with Nevada revised statute three fifty-four point six twenty-four. It's an exciting document too.
Josh Foley, Lion County Controller for the Record, and if you have insomnia, this is a cure for all sorts. You're good. But it is an important document, so. Okay, I do want to start out thanking all of my staff. It wouldn't be possible to create our auto report with all the, without all the work that they put in, both payroll and accounts payable and. Journal entries and all those fun things. And then also our auditor Jim Sharani. Uh he keeps us on our toes, makes sure we're doing the right things at the right times, so. Appreciate all of those those things. I will start off with the auto report. I'm gonna do a presentation for you. If you have any questions, you're welcome to ask as we go. You're welcome to ask at the beginning of the end, however you want to do it. Uh but if you don't have a preference, I'll get started.
Go ahead.
Okay, and I will have you turn or air it will be pages thirty-three and thirty-four. It might be easier if you do a view if you can. Where you can do side by side pages. But for the auto rate of page seventeen. That I'd like to start on. I'll let Jim Sharani come up later and get you at the beginning, the very first couple of pages for you later on his opinions. But uh on page seventeen, this is the statement of activities and this is an overview of. The revenues and expenses that happened for the last fiscal year from July first, two thousand twenty-two. Through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. What I would like to do is uh just go through and and hit a couple of highlights on this page. It's divided up into, and it's not an easy thing. For people to understand necessarily, but. There's really not the easiest uh solution to.
Commissioner Keller?
Yes.
You said page seventeen uh in our pan- in our booklet, we're up to five hundreds and stuff. Do you have that? Normally you give us both numbers.
So and.
Oh, that book. I'm looking at this one.
Yep. That's all right. So you've got two columns, one of them is for governmental activities, which are the vast majority. Of the funds that the county has. The other column, if you're on the right-hand page, the other column is business type activities, which would be. Your Dayton Water Fund, Dayton Sewer Fund, Willow Creek General Improvement District, Silver Springs General Improvement District. That's what that column is for. Uh so if we go down. Almost to the bottom, like the about the fourth number from the bottom, that's our change in that position. So that's how much we. Revenue we had over expenses last year or vice versa. In this case, it's revenue or we're expenses. So in the governmental activities. We have about eight million dollars more in revenue than expenses. Now, keep in mind, this isn't cash. Well, this is, we take a look at all the capital assets that we have, we subtract out the year's depreciation. Um and add those into expenses and there are a number of things that are trued up in here where it's not cash. We take all the property taxes receivable as if we would have collected all of them, even though we didn't get those in cash. And those are all reflected here. Uh so normally we get close to a break even on this number. The reason why we have a positive of eight million on the governmental activities is because we have been saving up. For some large capital expenditures that will be showing up. And those are the ten million dollar project that we have up at the district for remodel that's in process right now. Uh it's also saving up for the Dayton Government Complex where we're looking at somewhere around twenty-four or twenty-five million dollars. And so that's why that's saving up. If we go over to the business type activities, we have seven point seven million dollars increase. S- some of that, a few million dollars, probably about three million dollars. Is contributed capital from developers, meaning a developer builds a subdivision. And when they're done with it, they take the infrastructure in the ground, it's water and sewer, and they hand it over to Mister Burketta and say. Enjoy, this is yours to to use and take care of going forward. But we have to put that value in our financial statements as revenue the year that it comes in. So there's some of that in here. Some of that we have been saving up towards the uh rolling A capital project that is in here as well. A couple of other things to to take a look at. If we look at the property tax line, which is about the middle of the page. On the two right-hand columns, we'll see in two thousand twenty-three, which is the fiscal year we're talking about. There's seventeen point nine million dollars in revenue. Prior year was sixteen point eight million dollars in revenue, so we increased about a million dollars in property taxes. Across all of our funds, not just the general, but that includes medical indigent, indigent. Um cooperative extension, senior services, a a number of other funds that get property tax rates. So just so you're aware that the property tax revenues did go up. We go down about five lines farther down, we have consolidated taxes, which are mostly sales taxes. And those increased one point, almost one point six million dollars from nineteen million to twenty-one million. Is what we're looking at. So we did have revenue growth, not unexpected. But it was actually a little less than we had budgeted for, just so you're aware. And then we'll move down to the third line from the bottom of that section, which is called unrestricted investment earnings. You can see we increased two point six million dollars in investments earnings. Why? Interest rates went up. Uh we invested the money that we have, the money that we've been building up for these projects. We will see those if that revenue go up a little bit more in the current fiscal year. But then the last meeting we had last week, Federal Reserve, they're talking about potentially three rate decreases next year. Projection, we don't know what that will be. So this is money on the investment earnings. We enjoy it when it comes in, but we don't live off of that. You don't want to build your budget off of that coming in every year because it goes the other direction. The other thing to be aware of that, as I just brought up, we've been saving up for a number of capital projects. The project up at the just uh the district court, the remodel up there for ten million. Twenty-five million-ish for Dayton Government Complex. We have the South Plant. Or the Rolling A Plant Sewer Expansion, that's a twenty million dollar, over twenty million dollar project, well over now. We've been building up cash for a lot of those. Those will go down. When your cash balance drops, you don't earn as much interest because you don't have as much balance setting there to do it. So. In addition, the interest rates going down, our cash balances are gonna start dropping as we move forward, as we spend through some of the funds we've saved up. For capital projects. Any questions on that page before I move on?
Questions?
Okay, then we'll move on to page twenty of our book, which will be pages thirty-nine and forty of the PDF. This is looking at the governmental funds. And the same type of information, revenues, but versus expenditures, not expenses. So. This is closer to a cash flow other than we do account for payables at the year end. We book those back. But we aren't booking all the property taxes receivable as revenue. This is almost strictly cash flows other than a couple of receivables. That'll be coming in within the next sixty days. So the first column is the general fund. You can see that first section is called revenues and the total revenues for the general fund were almost forty-seven million dollars last year. So if you have people asking you, how large is the general fund? It's about forty-six, forty-seven million dollars in in revenues. We go down to expenditures below that and those broken out into. Categories like general government, which would include commissioners, controllers, recruiters, assessors, clerk treasurers. Um building and planning, those would be in there. Public safety is for your sheriff, animal control. Uh functions, you've got judicial, all your courts. Uh that go into that, plus juvenile probation, things like that. And then we have public works, which would be roads. Uh. Health, welfare, culture and recreation. And then we have capital out there. We did, so we spent about forty-three and a half million dollars last year. When we take a look in total, the fund balance changed in the general fund by four hundred and twelve thousand. That's almost a third, fourth line from the bottom. So out of forty-six million dollars in revenue, we showed about a one percent. Increase in fund balance over of that revenue amount. So our inbound ending fund balance was ten point eight million dollars at June thirtieth. Which is the second number from the bottom, or the last number at the bottom. That's our ending fund balance for the general fund. Keep in mind, when we built the budget, almost a year ago for the current fiscal year, we anticipated that number. To be eleven point seven million dollars. So we're a little over nine hundred thousand dollars less starting this year. Than what we had anticipated. Some of those things where we had some unexpected expenditures that came up towards the end of the year. In addition to that consolidated tax revenues for the last five months of the fiscal year. Ended up being lower than what we had projected. Uh when we're budget time, things have started to slow down in some of those things. And so we ended up. Starting this year a little bit underwater where we thought we would be, just so everyone's aware. Shouldn't be a surprise. I've brought that up to you in the past, but just wanted you to know. If we move over to the next major fund, and the the three funds here are your major funds, which are significantly larger than the other ones that you have. So we list those separately, and then everything else we accumulated in a single column to add to those. Is the regional street and highway fund, you're probably more familiar with the term RTC. And you can see that built up about eight hundred thousand dollars, if we go almost to the bottom on net change and fund balance. And with an ending fund balance of about sixteen point one million, that money is not all the counties to spend. We have a, we have RTC board that authorizes what those can be spent on for road projects. But some of that, based on assessed valuation, is split out for each of the cities as well. So of that seventeen or sixteen million, six point four million is for the county, and now those are the projects that Dustin does every year, where he comes and brings a five or six million dollar project for a chip seal and redoing of about twenty to twenty-five percent of the county's roads. That's where that money comes from. So he builds it up, so he has the cash there, and then brings it projects so that we're not borrowing for these projects. Eight point nine million of that money is city apartments that they have set aside for projects that they have. And then about eight hundred thousand is for the city of Urington, that they are using for projects that they're working on as well. And then if we go to the capital improvements fund, you will see that it increased. Uh, if you go from the fourth number from the bottom, it increased about seven million dollars uh for the year. Keep in mind, we have been building funds up. We have the public safety sales tax that goes into it, which is to set aside to remodel and expand the justice complex here. So the district court remodeled all the money that we brought in with that, and we spent very little of it last year because the project's happening this year. So we're spending ten million of that this year. Uh, so we we saved up for that. We transferred some money from the general fund last year into there because we had more revenue come in than we anticipated in prior years. We'll necessarily have that going forward. We just take a look at fund balance in prior years and say, how much do we have more than we need because we had vacancies, turnover, those type of things? And or revenues that came in higher than we anticipated because we had all the COVID stimulus funding that came in and stimulated the economy, our revenues came in higher than we anticipated. We build our next year budget with those revenues in it, so we're trying to keep track of that and budget for those in the future, but we had one-time savings or one-time extra that came in that we wanted to put for one-time projects. Because you can't use that money over and over again if it's not incremental over and over again. We get down to the bottom, we ended up with a fund balance of twenty, about twenty-six million. Of that, ten million is for the district court remodel. And sixteen million, the board has budgeted and set aside for the Dayton Government Complex, and we do that. Which gets us partway to the amount that we need for that. And then the other governmental funds, when you add all of those up, that's the next column, the fourth column, add up all the other funds, we had an increase in fund balance of two point nine million. About a million and a half of that was medical indigent, where we didn't spend as much as we brought in, and we had ended the act, the fund that gave us some money back through the NACO administration there. So we'll keep an eye on that and see how that balances out as we go forward, but that's the majority of it. We have eighteen point six million of other funds, that would include your road fund, cooperative extension, uh park construction tax. I can go through a laundry list of all of our other governmental funds. They're all consolidated into this column. So I'm done with this page unless you have any questions. Okay, then we'll move on to page twenty-two in your audit report, page forty-three on the PDF that she has. This is just a look at the general fund, and it shows you your budget versus actual, first column's original budget, then final budget. We've increased the final budget by grants that came in that we didn't budget for. We've increased the final budget by moving contingency to expenditures that was down in the contingency line item. Third column is what we actually received in revenues and spent in expenditures. Fourth column is the difference between what we bud- final budgets and what we are actual column, and then you have a comparative for the prior year. So if we take a look, I want you to focus for a minute on the variance column, which is the second one from the right, or the fourth column from the left. You can see property taxes came in about a hundred thousand dollars less than we budgeted for. Luckily, out of forty-six million, percentage-wise, that's not statistically different. Um, we go down to license and licenses and permits. We have almost one point five million dollar positive variance there. That is explained by utility license fees. I don't know about you, but you may have noticed my wife has noticed, I don't write the checks. My wife has noticed that our utility bills have gone up significantly over, and when we take a look at the last year. The county gets a percentage tax on those electric bills, uh gas bills, those type of bills for utilities. We get five percent of that money, and we call it utility license fees when we put it under licenses and permits. Those have gone up as those bills have gone up. And so that was unexpected, that it would increase as much as it did. Plus, when you get new construction, you have more people using utilities and so on and so forth. So that's why that one is going. Uh, intergovernmental revenues decreased by about a hundred and seventy thousand. Charges for services decreased by a little over a million dollars. Some of that is building permits. Went down. Um, we have a few other categories. A big piece of that is technology fees for the assessors. Um, and utility or the the assessors commissions as well as for, as well as recorders. Uh, real property transfer tax, a piece that we keep on this side, the their, the reporters' commissions. And so those have dropped as interest rates have gone up and the economy has slowed down, and we're not getting as much revenue. If we go down to fines and forfeitures, those are all pretty close to what we budgeted, and then we get to other revenues, they were about a million dollars more than we budgeted. Again, I want you to think interest rates going up and investment income coming into this fund. That's not something we can live off of going forward because as those cash balances drop and the interest rates drop, we can't use those to to use ongoing expenses, so we have to be careful of that. But that's an explanation of that. If we go down to the expenditures side, you can see the variance, biggest one is for public safety. The reason for that, for the most part, twofold. One, we couldn't get enough vehicles, even though we budgeted for them. So those rolled into the next fiscal year, but we have the budget savings in this year. Two, we had vacancies. We've had very difficult times trying to fill district attorney positions. We've had difficult times trying to keep dispatch fully staffed, to keep the sheriff's office fully staffed. Those vacancies result in the budget not being as much as we anticipated in those those spots. That's about all I have for the general fund for this page. Any questions on that? Okay, with that being said, we will move on to page.
There's one quick question. On uh the part where we get the licensing for the, I think it's license, uh, from the power company, we get paid five percent. What what do we get when we bring in like the solar fields or 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 stuff that goes through our counties? Do we get any income from that or?
Uh, the only income we get on that would be potentially property taxes. And sales taxes when they're actually building, but after it's built, unless it's used by an end customer within the county, we don't get a percentage of it.
Yeah, thank you.
So if we could move to page twenty-six, or actually page twenty-four now, which would be uh pages forty-seven and forty-eight on the PDF. This is the statement of net position for proprietary proprietary funds. These are your enterprise funds or utility funds that you run Dayton Water, Dayton Sewer, Willow Creek, General Improvement District and Silver Springs General Improvement District. This is a snapshot in time, as of June thirtieth of how much money we had, how many capital assets we had, what their cumulative depreciation was, how much we owed other people, and then what our net position was at the end of the at that point in time. The thing I want to focus on right now for you is the concept of depreciation. I bring this up every year. In theory, when you, let's just say I buy a vehicle for fifty thousand dollars. And I expect that vehicle is going to last me for ten years because I'm a good driver, right? You can agree with me, and I'm just kidding. So it's going to last for ten years. When we purchase that, that will go into capital assets at fifty thousand dollars, and every year of those ten years, we're going to do accumulated depreciation of five thousand dollars, or we're going to do depreciation expense of five thousand dollars. So at the end of it, we have fifty thousand dollars of accumulated depreciation in theory. Well, if we've expensed that and set that money aside, we have money to go out and buy another vehicle for fifty thousand dollars. Now, you may have bought a vehicle ten years ago, and you're ready to buy one today, and you realize fifty thousand ten years ago doesn't buy you a vehicle today, the same vehicle uh for a new vehicle. So in theory, you want to at least have your accumulated depreciation fully funded in cash, probably plus fifty percent or more than that. So I just want to show you where our utility funds are right now. We take a look at Dayton Water, and I just add up their cash that they that they have available, but not including customer deposits. I'm just going to take the top line of cash investments and go down and add some of the the restricted cash, not including customer deposits. For Dayton Water, we have thirteen point six million approximately in cash sitting here. We're on page twenty-four. On yours, it's going to be pages forty-seven, forty-eight. Forty-five? Okay, so then we go down to the accumulated depreciation, which is about two-thirds of the way up. And it shows eighteen point five million. So you can see we're about five, based on that, we're about five million dollars short of historical cost depreciation. And we would want to be significantly higher than that. So we're a little behind the curve on this fund. Just want you to be aware of that litmus test that we should do when we're looking at enterprise funds. On the sewer, you take that top cash of seventeen point seven seven million and add in the restricted cash of about two point six five three, and we come up with about twenty point four million dollars. Our accumulated depreciation is nineteen point six, so we are close to a million dollars short there. A little bit better off than the water fund is as far as the cash saved. But the challenge with that is we have a significant project for the sewer plant, so we're going to be spending into that. And next year, when we look at this, you're going to see that we have a lot less cash, but the accumulated depreciation is gone up to the new fund. We move over to Willow Creek and do the same methodology. We have about seven hundred and forty-three thousand there, and the accumulated depreciation is one point nine million. Still not where we want to be. But uh we're working towards making that closer. Silver Springs General Improvement District, we have about four point one million in cash, accumulated depreciation about five million. So we're a little bit short there where we would ideally be. So with that being said, any questions on this page? That's all I wanted to really point out there.
Even questions?
Then we'll move on to page twenty-six. I think it's page forty-nine or fifty, but I could have gotten it wrong for you guys. This is the, this, these are the same funds that we just covered, but this is the profit and loss or revenues versus expenses, statement of revenues and expenses and changes in net position. So I want you to look at the third number from the bottom. On the Dayton Water Fund, we had an increase in net position of about two point two million dollars. So we're trying to make progress in funding depreciation with Dayton Sewer, we have about five point four million dollars increase. Again, keep in mind, this isn't cash. There's another statement for that, but this is, this includes as revenue or contributions, the uh infrastructure that's in the ground with developers so nicely give us to take care of for the next however long they last. And then we move over to Willow Creek. We had a profit of about thirteen thousand in Silver Springs General Improvement District, a profit of about seventy-six thousand. The good news is we're showing positive increases in fund balance or net position in every one of these funds. So we're making progress on funding our depreciation and accumulated depreciation. We're just not where we want to be. So I just wanted to point that out for you. Any questions on this page? Okay, if none, we'll move on to, I'm going to skip all the way to page fifty. And that'll be page seventy-six for you. And that's it on the right there. This page shows all of the debt that the county has put as far as bonds. So we take a look at Dayton Sewer at the top of the page, you can see we have three state revolving fund issuances there. We have two thousand fourteen series, two thousand fifteen series, two thousand twenty-one series, which is going to end up being twenty million dollars. But as of June thirtieth, we had only drawn about ten point six million of that. Those are, so we have about eighteen point six in general obligation revenue bonds that are there. In addition to those, if we go down to the bottom of the page, we have straight revenue bonds that are not backed by the full faith and credit of the taxpayer. Top ones are, bottom ones are not. And these are USDA loans that we have, two of them for Willow Creek, when they did their sewer project back in heavens, I think it was two thousand, two thousand four. Somewhere back in there, two thousand. It was a few years back, and we're still paying on those. And then Dayton Sewer, we issued a USDA bond uh back when we went through the occidental area and redid that from septic to sewer system, we had to borrow to do that. Uh, and increase the rates to do that. So we have about almost seven million dollars in debt there between the two. We have about twenty, little over twenty-five, twenty-six million dollars in debt in total. So you're aware what that is. We are in the process of paying down every one of those, with the exception of that twenty million dollar debt for Dayton Sewer that we're doing the uh rolling A expansion, we're borrowing some of that money towards that as well. Any questions on the debt? Just want to make sure you're aware of that, but we haven't borrowed money for anything else, which is good because if we don't have to pay interest, we can actually stay afloat a little bit more. That's that much more money that we could use towards things that we have to need, spend money on, salaries, benefits, whatever this one be. So we'll move on to pages or start with page one forty-two, which I think will be one ninety-five for you Andrew, Andrew. And most of these pages that we're skipping over now are the detail of those those front pages, the beginning pages I went over, where you can go in and drill down by the individual funds. So on page one forty-two, this just is a graph that shows you the ending fund balance in the general fund over the past ten years. You can see we've built up, you want to build up the fund balance over the years to a certain level because as revenues go up and expenditures go up, you need a certain amount of cash there in fund balance to be able to make payroll because fund balance isn't all just cash. It includes at the end of the year, how much do people owe us? That we're going to collect within a sixty-day time period. How much do we owe other people? And what do we have in the bank on top of that? And so when we get down to that, we have about ten point eight million dollars in the general fund, but that's not all cash, just so you're aware. Any questions on that page? Then we'll go to the next pie graph. This is the general fund on the next page, page one forty-three. The general fund, and it's the expenditures, and these expenditures are broken down by function, so you can see in a pretty picture how much goes for general government, or how much goes for culture and recreation or judicial or public safety. And so you can see the public safety is about forty-one percent of the general fund budget. Or what we spend in the general fund, judicial is about twenty-five percent. So for those activities, you have them together. If I can do the math in my head, you're at sixty-six percent of all we spend goes for public safety and judicial expenditures. That's where the majority of what this board collects money for in the general fund is what they spend it on. Uh, general government are things that we are required for the most part under statute provide. I listed a little bit earlier, assessor, clerk treasurer. Uh, we have community development in there, uh commissioners, a number of other things, uh comptroller. Those are included in those. Any questions on that page? Or we move on to the next page, page four, and that shows the same information. But instead of doing it by function, it's going to split it out by what we call is object. How much is for salaries? How much is for benefit? How much is for employee benefits? How much is service supplies? How much is capital outlay? You can see that salaries and benefits end up being sixty three percent of your total budgets. Uh, capital outlay increased during the year by one percent from the prior year. It's a total of three percent. I want you to thank ARPA funds. We spent money, three hundred and some thousand dollars at the fairgrounds doing some expenditures. Some of those grant funds, when they come in, will skew this, so it looks like we're spending more outside of salaries and benefits. And we are, but it's a temporary thing because we have these one-time grants. Any questions on that page? Okay. Then we will move on to the next page, page one forty five. We add up all of our special revenue funds. This is everything outside of the general fund that's governmental. So this would include your RTC, would include all of your different funds except for utility funds. You can see what the fund balances are here. Again, a significant increase from last year to this year is mostly the medical indigent fund. Those funds are restricted by state law, have to be spent for certain things. Uh, and then the RTC funded increased a little bit during the year and some of the other funds as well. Any questions on that one? Then we'll move on to the next page. Page one forty six in our audit report. This is the road fund, any fund balance. Now you remember our discussion on utility license fees. We, the gas taxes in the road fund. And that is the primary source of revenue in the road fund. However, for some reason, the gas tax revenues are staying almost even year to year. They're not increasing with inflation. They're not significantly changing because we get a flat amount per gallon, even though we may get a few more gallons, it may go up slightly. We are not increasing enough to fund the road fund. So what we have been doing, because those funds are not restricted, is we've been taking those utility license fees and increasingly putting it into the road fund because you can see what the fund balance is doing as we go over the years. And the current fiscal year, we've, we've increased from about two hundred thousand a year to the current fiscal year, which is after this report of a milk run. Those utility license fees are generated for the county outside of the city limits. So all of this revenue that comes in from the utility license fees has nothing to do with someone who lives and pays bills within the city. We're just collecting unincorporated areas of the county. The roads that we're maintaining with this money are all unincorporated areas of county, which is why they match up together. But we're having to put more and more money in here to keep this fund whole so that we can keep the roads. And I won't even say that we're keeping it at the level uh, that we need to, but that's, that's how we're funding this current. And the cities levy their own utility license fees and they receive those so they can use them for whatever they wish.
So, so most of that uh, delivery systems that we get nowadays from everything that we order to our front porch, they're getting their gas outside our county. For the most part.
I have no idea. And not all of these gas taxes are generated within Lang County. Some of these gas taxes are collected statewide and distributed out based on population. Some of them are collected statewide and distributed out based on miles of roads maintained. Some of them, a small percentage of them are gallons that are sold within the county as well. So if, if you have an Amazon delivery driver or UPS delivery driver that visits my house every single day, right this time of year at least, uh, those people, if they feel up in Lang County, will get a piece of that. If they feel outside of Lang County, we still get some of those gas taxes.
Thank you.
Any questions on, on this? Okay. So we'll move on to page one forty nine. We're gonna, and I'm almost done with my book, by the way, in case you're almost asleep. Page one forty nine would be two or three for you. I just like to illustrate, this is one that's like principal property taxpayers in the county over the for last fiscal year and then nine years prior. So it's really a ten-year comparison. So you can see who your number one taxpayer in Lang County is through number ten now. And you can also see how they rated uh, nine years ago, which in effect, when you count the years, it's ten years worth of activity there. Your number one taxpayer in the county is Nevada Copper. Second one is MB Energy. And then MV four, New Fernley LLC, which is a developer from Fernley area. Trex, Union Pacific Railroad, Apple, Perry and Perry, Nevada Cement, Polaris, and finally Southern California Edison Company. Those are your top ten taxpayers in the county. It's interesting to see what those are and how much uh, they add up to. They, if you add them all up, they're approximately eleven percent of our property taxes from those ten taxpayers in the county. Any questions on that page? There's also, if you want to go through and find some good information, Andrew always asked me, I want to look at some of these back pages. It's got, we have information on property tax levies, debts, um, employees, justice court cases, how many um, people we have on averaging uh, over the year in the jail and so on and so forth, demographics, population, change in personal income, unemployment rate, school enrollment. There's a lot of stuff in here, so you can have fun at your leisure. I'm not gonna take you through all of it right now. I have one last piece that I'm gonna present, and that will be on pages one sixty four through one sixty six for Andrew, we'll start in two eighteen. These are our federal awards. Schedule federal awards. So any federal money that we get, other than pill, is listed on this um, when we spend it. So if we go to the last page, scroll down one more, Andrew, on page one sixty six, you can see it adds up to twelve point two seven nine million dollars that we received. The lion's share of that are those state revolving fund bonds that we did through the Dayton Sewer Fund. We borrowed during the year, we borrowed eight point six seven million dollars in cash on those. So that's the lion's share of it. We also have about a little over a million dollars in ARPA funds that we have in there. And we're gonna see a lot more of that as, as some of the projects that we get are coming to fruition in this year and next fiscal year. Uh, we also have a little over two million dollars that's human services. And they have about one point nine million dollars in revenues that they get outside of that. So they get, they get more than half of their budget for senior services and indigent services funded out of federal grants. Any questions on this? Okay, with that, I am done with my presentation. So if you have any questions before you get to the, the man who's gonna come tell you whether these numbers actually are correct or not. I'll answer any questions. If not, we'll let Mr. Shroni come up and do his presentation closer.
Good morning. Jim Shroni with Shroni Company. Pleasure to be here. Kind of got a little head cold going, so it might sound a little nasally. I sound nasally to me, but pleasure to be here and present the twenty-three audit report. I know bomb is bomb stock, and it's just crazy how each year it keeps getting bigger. On pages one thirty one through one thirty four, I don't know if you ever had a chance to look at it, but Josh had to change some of the concept there. Hours and hours of work went into doing that and you look at it and it doesn't look like much, but boy, he spent a lot of time doing that. So uh, maybe you hire outside auditing firmies to issue an opinion on these financial statements. And so on page one, two, and three of the, of this uh, audit report is our opinion. Lots of verbiage, lots of paragraphs, so largely was down to the opinion that we, after testing and confirmation, analysis of a lot of different numbers, became the conclusion that these financial statements present fairly the results of operation and the financial position of that line counting as of June thirty, twenty twenty three. So three pages boiled down real quick. So in addition to that, um, criminal accounting standard also requires to issue two other opinions depending on the composition of your government. So on page one fifty nine, one sixty, a gas audit. We're also required to issue an opinion on your internal control and compliance with laws and regulations. So part of this process, we're gonna do a limited review of your internal control systems. We're gonna test your cash receiving cycles, both here at the county and definitely at Dayton Utilities. Test the payroll dispersment cycle, cash receiving cycle. And based on those, we're trying to make a determination to those systems, internal controls isn't reliable enough to produce um, reliable data. So based on all our testing, we came to question that, yes, the control's in place, do percent reliable data. And so that's the foundation of the audit report, that the numbers that get found in the general ledger are um, accurate and reliable. So on that, two opinions, you could have weaknesses internal control, and the biggest weakness usually is lack of segregation of duties. So usually we'll have findings that smaller entities that have a limited number of staff to perform a variety of functions. So happy to announce in page one fifty nine, one sixty, there were no findings or no significant weaknesses in general control. Then if you receive over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal expenditure, we're also required to test internal controls and compliance with laws and regulations and grant agreements at that federal level. So again, involves a whole new set of testing. Again, it's a risk-based approach. We pick the largest and the most risky. Sometimes the federal government tells us so. In this case, if uh, if a grant is over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's uh, considered a type A major program. And in this case, you had two, the Safe Water Grant and ARPA. So those two were tested. Safe Water was about seventy percent of twelve million. ARPA was a million, one seventy one. So we ended up testing about eighty percent of all the federal expenditures. So what do we test? We again, again, test dispersment cycle. We test reporting, you know, our numbers reported to the federal agency matched the general ledger, um, where costs being planned allowable under federal guidelines. And so those are some of the requirements that are tested. Again, with that, you could have findings or deviations from prescribed controls by the federal government. Um, Josh saw it, did a really good job, very thorough. And so again, we had no findings at the federal level. So that's pretty much summary of what we do. I'm always happy to work with Josh Staff, always very pleased, you know, that his audit report always gets his certificate of quency. Again, lots of, lots of hard work goes into getting that certificate. And basically that's kind of like the still that the, you're up to snuff with all the reporting requirements, disclosure requirements. And our, our profession is always ever-changing. Next year, we have some significant um, changes again coming down our way on our side. So um, a lot more documentation, a lot more testing, a lot more documentation. With that, I feel any questions?
Questions? I always enjoy reading your opinion letters because they make sense and the rest of it kind of just rambles on and on, numbers and stuff. Do, do the math, but um, I, I think Mr. Foley knows I, I add the numbers up occasionally, find a few that make me look harder at the rest. But um, other than that, I really appreciate your report. Thank you for telling us how good our comptroller is doing.
Yeah.
Definitely.
That's probably one that might be the only comptroller in the state that actually, actually prepared this document. Many uh, counties actually have the auditing firm or another third firm prepare the financial reports. Professors to the gentlemen.
Proud of them.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. or Commissioner Jacobson, you have a question or a comment?
Uh, thank you, Chairman Hockaday. I appreciate it. Uh, I just want to thank Mr. Foley and his staff for, for uh, the great report and uh, keeping us out of uh, harm's way as far as the uh, uh, bookkeepers of America go. And then also, Mr. Shroni, I appreciate your service as well. Um, job well done. Again, Mr. Foley, nice, nicely done.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobson. Sentiment's uh, shared, I think, by all of us. Anything further? Any public comment? If not, then uh, we're looking to approve fiscal year twenty twenty three annual comprehensive financial report. I have a motion on that. Commissioner Hendrick?
We approve the fiscal year twenty twenty three annual comprehensive financial report.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Hendrick, second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, uh, assets five zero.
We take a break?
Yes, that was on my mind. Um, and thank you very much. Take a, let's take a ten-minute break. We'll be back at All right, it's ten fifty five. We're gonna call the meeting back to order. And we are at item seven. Microphones are on?
Yep.
For presentation only, present dispatcher Jackie Greer with a stork pen for delivering a baby while on duty.
Uh, good morning. Long County Sheriff Brad Poe for the record. And to clarify that, uh, the title, she didn't actually have a baby when she was on duty. I know we're we're a little short staff, but not that short staff, so. I wrote the title, so didn't think about it until it was read out loud and Commander Miller pointed out to me, so. Uh, we've honored and uh, presented a lot of awards to our deputies and other staff and and uh, it's time that several of our dispatchers and one in particular today uh, be awarded. Dispatch has a tradition. When they help deliver a baby over the phone, uh, they're awarded their, their stork pen is called. And so today we wanted to award dispatcher Jackie Greer with that. And on March second of twenty twenty three, dispatcher Greer received a call from a male subject reporting that his wife was forty weeks pregnant, was in active labor. The uh, they had a midwife on scene and however, during the delivery, baby's heart rate dropped significantly and they called their, plus an ambulance. Uh, dispatcher here handled the call professionally and dispatched the appropriate units while she was laying line with the family. The mother delivered, delivered a health, healthy baby boy. Uh, dispatcher here remained calm and helped the family through a stressful time and was reassuring. This is a prime example of the standards that we hold our employees to. Childbirth related calls are not a high frequency call, luckily. And therefore not occurring often enough to be a normal situation for a dispatcher and consider it to be a rare occurrence. So today, uh, we wanted to present dispatcher Jackie here with her stork.
All right, we're gonna go on to commissioners and county manager reports. Uh, we'll go down the line here, start with Commissioner Keller. Can you report?
So since our last meeting, I attended the tree lighting in Silver Springs. We had a big turnout and it was uh, it was, it was nice to see the community out there. It was a fun time. I attended the planning commission. Uh, NACO Public Lands and Natural Resources. And right now we're at that committee where uh, developing plan for better practices statewide on BLM. Uh, and we'll, I'll bring forward the comments that we had about the fire to them. And uh, we'll present that to the NACO General Board. I attended the NACO General Board meeting. And I also had an opportunity to meet with our forty-fifth president, Donald Trump. Had a conversation with him, thanking him for what he did for Lang County and uh, what happened in the opportunities that he created. And that's it.
Commissioner Hendricks.
I attended the Christmas tree lighting in Silver Springs as well, and also the NACO Public Lands and Natural Resources meeting. And last night I attended the Carson Water Sub Conservancy District meeting.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Attended the Campo meeting on December thirteenth. One of the things that came out of that meeting is the Campo staff has agreed that they are going to go to both the Mound House Citizen Advisory Board and the Dayton Regional Advisory Board to listen to the citizens' comments about transportation within the Campo area, which covers most of Dayton. Also attended the Board of Directors meeting for NACO. One thing I want to bring up about it. We had a presentation from NV Energy on EV charging systems and their plans to roll those out. There's there's three models. The one where NV Energy can own them and they set their rates and there can be a third party contractor that can own them. Or a customer, you know, the county could buy them if they wanted to. Why I'm bringing this up? Because it doesn't really seem like NV Energy is interested in sharing any of the money that they are going to generate by charging vehicles that will now drive on our roads and cause damage without paying. So that's something that we need to discuss is, you know, that some future plan a way to see if we can put a franchise fee or whatever on these EV charging systems because they're going to be coming. That's all.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Chairman Hockaday, do you have me now?
Yes.
All right, I attended the room tax meeting. Just want to thank all those organizations that bring outside groups, individuals into our county, generating revenue, celebrating the unique interests and strengths of our our great county. And again, I apologize for not being there today in Vegas. My son's in a basketball tournament and I am proud to say that the country boys from Fernley are whooping up on the city boys down here in Vegas. So that's all I have. Want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
Yeah, you guys have a Merry Christmas and thank you for that input about whooping the city boys. Appreciate that. I attended quite a few activities. You get a lot of calls to go to evening activities this time of year. But I did want to bring up one that I was attending the Rotary Dinner, where Sheriff Pope came over to visit Smith Valley and they asked him to give a little speech. It was very, he did an excellent job kind of relating the motto of the Rotary and law enforcement together. He did did quite well. I appreciate him coming over and discussing that with the community. He made a comment about Smith Valley. Actually, I think had twenty percent of the people voted for you. And that was interesting because I was going to say, who are those twenty percent? But we really appreciate. No, we appreciate it. Your your speech was really phenomenal. I I think everybody enjoyed it over there. I mean, everybody that I talked to was very happy with your speech and also with your 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 activities in in conducting the county law enforcement as you are. So we're very, very proud of your duties that you've been completing and I think everybody was very pleased with with your attendance there. So thank you for coming over. That's go to the county manager then.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager, not a whole lot to report today. Aaron did ask, though, that I just let everyone know that we are currently working on scheduling speakers for the invocation for the next year. And so if anybody interested in that, just get in contact with our office so we can get them on the schedule.
That's all?
Any any questions?
No questions? No, thank you. Elected official reports. And
I don't have a lot to say. Stacy Lyon County, quick treasure. I've come a long way in the last year and I've had a blast and I'd like to thank you all and wish you a very Merry Christmas. My staff is amazing and the staff at the county has been so supportive even when I'm meditating or needing assistance. They've been amazing. And I'd like to thank you all and wish you a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Same to you. Sheriff Pope?
Like I share Fred Pope and speaking in Smith Valley, I kept my bulletproof vest on, so.
That on that night.
I'll make this quick. We completed our our shop with the sheriff event. We're able to provide a Christmas for forty-two kids from around the county. It went well, very well attended by the sheriff's office. Actually had some extra deputies standing around. We're able to take two or three kids on different rotations. So it went good. Also, we got third place in the Urrington Christmas Parade. I was a judge, so there's a little bias there. Think I bumped this up a little bit, but my guys that did the parade did awesome with the float and arresting the Grinch went well, so. We were able to take some of our leftover gift cards. And we've identified some seniors in need in Fernley. We're waiting on a list of supplies that they need. So some of our leftover gift cards from shop with the sheriff will be used to help some of the seniors in need firmly. So that went well. I want to thank the county commissioners for helping the Lyon County Sheriff's Office, county manager staff for helping the Lyon County Sheriff's Office through a successful year. We'll be delivering our year-end report for the twenty-three year at the second meeting in January. Have that prepared for you guys. Just want to give you a heads up. I'll say Merry Christmas to you all, to county staff, Lyon County Sheriff's Office staff and and see you next year.
Any questions for the sheriff before he wanders off? No, and I do appreciate you working on the issue. I know you put it in Facebook for our concealed weapons program in kind of lining up with other counties. I know it was an additional thing. I I just asked the question and you guys did all the work. So I do appreciate you getting on that and changing that policy for Lyon County.
Appreciate the push.
Okay, thank you, sir. You're a good job. You're good. All right. Appointed official reports.
Morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, Louis Cariola, Community Development Director. I know we've got the Christmas party coming up and I've been encouraged to go through this quickly. And as you know, I have no problem speaking quickly, so I'll do so. Quick end of year report for community development. We're going to jump through planning, building, code enforcement, and then a quick comment on engineering. So we did pull some totals from the building department. New residential permits, we totaled over one thousand, I think most notably, one hundred eighty-two new stick-built homes and fifty-three new manufactured homes. You can see the bulk of the other items sort of itemized there. I will supply you all with the end of year. For commercial permits, we issued ninety-two. As you might imagine, those are more expensive and a little more involved for plan review. And then there's again, a small breakdown of the types of permits that are included in the commercial permits. For code enforcement, this is the end of year report for new cases. I highlighted the items at the bottom row where we see the largest type of complaints. That will be probably not a surprise to most of us. Accumulation of refuse and residing in an RV are the biggest complaints we see throughout our communities. This chart is broken out into our distinct communities. So when you see this report, if you wanted to get some sense of where your jurisdiction is seeing the most issues in code enforcement, that'll be outlined for you. You see the the bottom right corner at three hundred ninety-nine for total cases open this year. I know that looks like a kind of a scary number, but when we flip over to this this next slide for code enforcement, these are the numbers of closed cases within twenty twenty-three. Now, closed is a, you know, still a term that we're not quite sure is it means what it should as we discussed in our code enforcement workshop back in October. But we did close over five hundred cases in code enforcement. Once again, as you might expect, the types of cases that were closed at the largest rate were again accumulation of refuse and residing in RVs. We'll move ahead here now to planning. We broke out the individual types of entitlements, the total being seventy-eight. That top row includes maps and zoning and master plan amendments. That second middle row includes conditional use permits, temporary use permits, and major variances. Notably, you had you you would have seen and voted upon eight conditional use permits and three major variances. Again, we'll have better breakdowns for you in the total report. For planning, we did take one extra step and provide you with a kind of a second layer of data here for subdivision maps. So these will be residential subdivision maps, including totals from not just calendar year twenty-three, but also twenty twenty-two. That first or that second column for the tonal lot count for single-family lots within our tentative subdivision maps comes out to two thousand and four. I know that sounds like a lot, a very large number, but if you note that that fourth column for final maps, that's where we know how many lots are still under review prior to recording of a final map. Those Xs in that column represent the maps that have actually been recorded. So if we look down to that final or to the bottom right corner of the slide, one hundred eighty-five final map lots were recorded. So that number is a lot smaller than the tentative maps. I think sometimes a public especially needs to sort of be explained the process here from tentative map to final map and the time it takes to process. So we will provide you with this information in case your constituents have questions. They're always, of course, welcome to contact community development. Again, for parcel maps, so these are subdivisions of four lots or less. We did do a total for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. As you might expect, these numbers are much smaller with only twenty-three lots essentially created, if you would. And planning, we're looking forward to next year. A number of code amendments, as previously mentioned, we had that code enforcement workshop. So that's going to be something that's going to be a priority for staff to bring forward an amended code enforcement coordinates for your review. And then the residential design standards, that one was sort of continued by this body in November. So we're still working on amendments that and that, of course, would be coming forward very soon. That is a priority for community development. We'll also be working with the treasurer's office, Ms. Lindberg, to work on moving special events out of her office and into community development. With Night in the Country pending, we recognize, of course, this is also a priority. So community development is going to be quite busy in the beginning part of twenty twenty-four. So that's why we're really hoping that we can fill our senior planner position. Full staff would certainly go a long way in helping us. That said, I am quite proud of the of the work that our existing staff has done, even being short-staffed. For I will move on just real quickly for engineering. As you all know, Dowell's our private contracted county engineer. Their existing contract will sunset at the end of twenty twenty-four. But there are working relationship has still been fairly smooth. Remaining remaining slides here run through all of the planning items for the year as well as the votes. They also include the tally inscription of what happened to the planning commission for each item. Again, I'll supply that to you. So we won't waste any more time running through that. And I did just want to give a quick shout out to staff who helped assemble the data for this report, Shannon Johnson, Michael Johnson, and Pamela Rogers. I think that was record time and a mobile before any questions if you have any.
Questions? Commissioner Jacobson, do you have any questions?
Ah, Chairman Chairman Hockaday, I I don't have any. Thank you, Mr. Cariola.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Cariola, I just want to congratulate you for remembering your glasses.
Thank you, sir. Actually, please, the brother for me.
Yeah. That's 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 a that's a good one, Commissioner Henderson. No, I I appreciate everything you've done this year. You jumped in with both feet. You got the job, all the jobs taken care of and up to date. Appreciate your report.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Okay, you too.
Good morning, Shayla Holmes, Director, Lyon County Human Services. I just wanted to share with you all at the end of last week, we received a notification that we are officially a Medicaid provider for provider type fourteen. So we will begin billing for provider type fifty-four, which is targeted case management and provider type fourteen, which is outpatient behavioral health starting this upcoming month. So we'll start seeing revenue from that plan early this upcoming year. And we're super excited to receive both of those notifications since it's a project we started back in March. So it's been lengthy, but wanted to share with you all that we have made it through that first hurdle and now we will begin seeing the output.
Any questions? Commissioner Jacobson, anything? You do just throw your hand up. Okay. We'll move on to Ms. Hugh Foley.
That's fully Lyon County Comptroller. I apologize you have to hear from me twice today. However, some important things that have good news and bad news, which would be like first?
The best.
The bad news. Okay, we'll start with the bad news. Over the past few months, it's become very apparent in talking with the road department and the sheriff's office that we are having challenges with a number of vehicles at the sheriff's office. So normally we will take them out of service at a hundred and fifty thousand miles from a patrol vehicle and use those for other things in the county where they aren't as critical to be lower mileage. Keep in mind, sheriff's vehicles run a lot more than just the odometer shows. So a hundred fifty thousand, maybe closer to two hundred or two hundred and fifty thousand on another vehicle as far as engine there. We currently have seventeen vehicles at a hundred and thirty thousand miles or more in the sheriff's boot. We have all of the loner vehicles assigned because we have vehicles that are in for maintenance, down for repairs, whatever the case may be, being fixed from accidents. They are literally to the point where they come in to bring their car in for regular service. They don't have a car to take out of the yard to do their job. Which is a challenge. We do have eight vehicles, new vehicles coming in over the next couple of months hopefully, and it usually takes some time to get those in and outfitted. That will help because the sheriff is moving forward with hiring his vacancies. And so when he gets fully staffed, he's going to be short by four vehicles, three to four vehicles, depending on how they assign the vehicles at. With that being said, we need vehicles in there. Ideally, I would come to the board right now and say, let's go order twenty-one vehicles. It's seventy thousand dollars. However, I don't know that we have enough budget to do so at this point. Part of the reason we're at this stage, twofold. One of them is because of the lag in getting vehicles from COVID. That's a small piece of it. In addition to that, the prior sheriff's administration started to practice, which then the Board of County Commissioners adopted this policy instead of the vehicles, if someone lived outside the county, outside of the county and reported to work in the county, so the vehicles being at the nearest location when they come into the county, they've become take-home vehicles and approximately thirty percent of our sheriff's office that are sworn stat live outside the county, ranging from Gardnerville, Sparks, Sun Valley Truck, Heath, Fallon, Carson City. And so we're putting a significant amount of miles on those vehicles that are commuting miles at this point, plus a significant amount of miles on these vehicles that are work-related. So we are going to be coming to the board probably at your next meeting because we need to take action sooner rather than later and at least take nearby to the apple and say, let's let's ask the board to authorize ten vehicle purchases in the current fiscal year out of contingency to start us on the path of getting to where we have functioning vehicles for every person that's on the street so that they're not doing but patrol or bicycle patrol, which doesn't work very well in Lyon County. So it'll be approximately seven hundred thousand dollars is what we're looking at. And then we will have to build into the budget to get us back to par on where we need to be. So I am happy to answer any questions and I do want to thank both the road department and Commander Powell and the rest of the sheriff's office staff and working together to try and quantify where we're at right now.
You did say you had some good news, though. That's next.
Yes, I am done speaking.
Uh, Commissioner Keller, I think you had a. Okay, yeah. You you didn't have any good news?
Christmas is.
That's that's it. Oh, thank you. Um. Okay, uh, so we will be seeing that on the agenda in twenty-twenty-four. Okay, thank you very little. Um, Commissioner Jacobson, did you have anything?
Uh, now to just time, thank you, Mr. Foley.
Okay. All right, moving on to Mr. Holman.
Good morning, Dustin Holman, Road Director for the record. I just wanted to update the board on the Miller I A Z P Hendrix um issue that was in front of the board last week. We received the speed limit signs. So last week, we got seventeen, replaced seventeen new speed limit signs on those three roads on Monday. Um, we're probably a couple more weeks out on the flashing stop sign. Soon as we get those, we'll get those installed and I will update the board. But although that's been completed.
Thank you. Question, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, say, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, are you going to put your little road counters out there to see what effect that the the reduced speed limits actually having?
Yeah, and I believe that she has is uh doing road counts or has just done road counts on that road. We didn't do it this summer when we typically do because it was close, so there wasn't much need for it. So, um, yeah, we'll do, we'll do a current road count and then we'll give it a few months and then do another one and see what the comparison is.
Yeah, I'd rather see it a little sooner than a few months for for the comparison, but I I am curious to see, see those side by side.
Yeah.
Um, just as one thing, though, I would, um, not sure how the process works, but it would be a good idea to get ahold of anybody that uh runs the GPS, Garmin, whoever, and let them know that uh it's going to take a lot longer now to go on Miller I A Z and Pete Hendrickson in the past, and maybe they'll stop putting it down as a fast route, a fast, fast route.
And I know, uh, Chief Draper contacted Sheriff Pope and I, and he thought that he had a a contact that would might be able to put a bug in Google's there, but but that's been changed, so we haven't had that that one though. Being able to communicate that well with with Google on other issues that we had throughout the year, but hopefully he he might have a better contact.
Yep, just keep trying. Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, right, I don't see anybody else lined up. So we'll move on to item eleven, Advisory Board Reports. I don't see any hands up on Zoom and. Nope, okay, then we'll move on to Consent Agenda. Action will be taken on all items. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action. And without an extensive hearing, any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. Uh, just a reminder, we do have a late backup on the minutes. I'm going to a couple of changes there, so those have been corrected. Um, do we have any commissioner input on this? Public input? If not, then uh we have a consent agenda twelve A through twelve J. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I moved that we approved the consent agenda items twelve A through twelve J.
Second, okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Keller. Keller, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. I was waiting for you there, Commissioner Jacobson. We have five zero. And we'll move on to thirteen A for possible action approved or request for a two-year extension of time until December twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five to submit a final subdivision map for the final phase of River Park Dunes Four subdivision Dayton. Nevada consisting of twenty-nine single-family residential lots covering an area of eleven point five-three acres on APN zero-two-nine dash seven four-two dash zero-eight. The tentative map was approved on November third, twenty-sixteen, PLZ two-zero-two-three dash zero eight-one. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Lewis Carriola, Community Development Director, uh, presenting, and again, quickly. Uh, the request for the extension of time is for two years until December twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, some quick maps here to show you the general location of the site uh, in uh just south of Fort Churchill Road in Dayton, uh, east of Highway fifty uh, accessed by Stratton Drive. The subject site's about eleven point five-three acres. Uh, it's currently undeveloped, however, um, per this image, you can see the developer, unlike most subdivision maps, has already received certificates of completion from the county engineer, the county utilities director, and the county roads director for installation of the roadways and the utilities. Um, this project is ready to go, and with this time extension, the applicant indicates they will move quickly to record their final map. Uh, there would be twenty-nine single-family residential lots uh created. Uh, this tentative map, of course, was already previously approved. The applicant pointed out uh the fact that this map did start before uh the Great Recession. It expired. It was then again approved in twenty-sixteen, and then now uh this developer's been moving through the phases. This is the final phase uh for River Park Dunes. I am available for any questions.
Questions? No. No questions, then we will move on to any public comment. Seeing none, I'll look for a motion. Nobody's going to jump in. Uh, Commissioner Keller?
Oh, go ahead.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Um, I move that we um approve the extension of the two-year extension of time until December twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five to submit a final map for the final phase of the River Park Dunes Four subdivision Dayton, Nevada, consisting of twenty-nine single-family residential lots covering an area of eleven point five-three acres on APN zero-two-nine seven-four-two oh eight.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Hendricks and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, pass five zero. Get to the regular agenda. Action will be taken on all on all items unless otherwise noted. Advisory Board for Possible Action Acknowledge the Resignation of Gina Lee from the Dayton Regional Advisory Board and the Central Lyon County Parks and Recreation Board. Any comments from commissioners? Comments from the public? And I'll look for a motion to accept her letter of resignation. Thank you, thank you, Gina Lee for uh all that you've done. It sounds like you're moving on to some studies in a different area of your career. And we'll look forward to having you come back.
Mr. Chair, I'm I'm moved that we acknowledge the resignation of Gina Lee from the Dayton Regional Advisory Board and the Central Lyon County Parks and Recreation Board, and thank her for her service.
Second. Okay. Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Fourteen B for Possible Action Acknowledge the Resignation of of Morgan Brown from the Dayton Regional Advisory Board. Any commissioner comment? Do you see public comment? Commissioner, please.
I move that we acknowledge the resignation of Morgan Brown from the Dayton Regional Advisory Board.
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Hendricks, second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes at zero.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Before we move on, I got a question for staff real quick. What does that leave us on the Dayton Regional Advisory Board? How many, how many people are still on there?
Um, I believe also Gina Lee's husband cannot think of his name on the spot. He did not re-up his, so that will leave us with two.
Which is not a form.
Does not.
Okay, thank you. This will get busy recruiting people.
I have something to do it next year.
Yeah. Okay, we'll move on to fourteen C for Possible Action Acknowledge the Resignation of Charles Lawson from the Debt Management Commission. And uh, I know Mr. Lawson has done a lot in this uh community and uh we'll um, definitely uh miss him on the Debt Management Commission. Do I have um any other?
Chairman Hock.
Uh, Commissioner Jacobson.
I just want to personally thank Charles Lawson. He is a wonderful, wonderful gentleman, and I um, just want to thank him for for everything, and I would like to make a motion that we acknowledge the resignation of Charles Lawson from the Debt Management Commission.
Okay, uh, thank you, Commissioner Jacobson. I totally agree with you. Uh, is there any public comment before we move on with his motion? If not, we have a motion by Commissioner Jacobson.
Second.
Okay. And I'll take a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Uh, Clerk Treasurer for Possible Action Conduct a hearing to decide to revoke delinquent and or non-compliant business licenses and allow the Business License Department to close the accounts. Full list of business in confirmation of outreach is on the attachment, the business listing in default. Oh.
Say, Lindbergh, Lyon County Clerk Treasurer. Um, yes, on the business license, I need to redact some that we were able to um get current and reactivate it. Um, I'd like to remove um license number one-one-two-zero-nine Carson Taco Electric. I'd like to remove uh license number one-one-three-eight-four Benham's Commercial LLC. I'd like to remove one-one-five-six-two Home Metal Solar LLC. I'd like to remove one-one-six-one-nine Bennett Construction. I'd like to remove zero-one-zero-one-six-dash-one um, Sibs Corporation. Zero-nine-five-one-dash-one Kaiser Plumbing. And one-zero-eight-four-three-dash-one R Squared Enterprises. Those were businesses that reached out to us through our efforts to say they would like to maintain an active business license in Lyon County and have paid all their dues and brought their states current. Uh, the other um parties um have been in suspension uh, since their fees were not paid uh automatically renewed back in July. And we've sent letters, we've we've made email contact, and we've also sent certified and regular mail letters um, asking them to comply or get in touch with us. And we've had no response, so we are moving to remove those from our rolls to to keep our rolls clean and active for the upcoming business license year. Um, I just had a couple stats I wanted to share with you. So we have opened two-hundred-and-twenty-two new businesses in Lyon County this year um, to kind of offset the the cancellations that we're requesting you to approve. And um, we've had fourteen actually call and and close when we made efforts to see if they were still doing business here, and most have either relocated or no longer in business.
Okay, and so you do have an updated list and a total updated list?
Yes, yes, that that list that's provided there, um, less the ones that I've read, and I have it here. And I can enter it into the notes for late backup. And um the rest have made no contact with us and have not made any arrangements to appear for the hearing today.
Right, any questions?
One.
Uh, Commissioner Keller?
So when it says, when you brought them back online and they didn't have their state license, do they have to pull that back up?
Yes, yes. Yeah, for the code, it says that we're, they are required to be current with all federal and state in order for us to re-initiate their license.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything further? Any public comment on this? Certainly, time for any of these businesses to jump in at the last minute if they. Okay, uh, Commissioner Jacobson, did you have anything? I noticed it flashed up.
I I have nothing other than to thank Ms. Lindbergh.
Okay. All right, then, uh, no more comments. We'll look for a motion.
Make a motion.
Commissioner Keller, go ahead.
Motion to revoke delinquent and or non-compliant business license and approve the Business License Department to close those accounts as they were presented.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Keller, second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes five zero. Thank you. Facilities sixteen A for Possible Action Prove the Purchase of a Scissor Lift in the Amount of twenty thousand six-hundred-six-six dollars for maintenance and service of the HVAC system and lighting at the Justice Complex with funding to come from the Public Safety Sales Tax. Okay, Mr. Homestead.
First of all, Merry Christmas to you and all your families. I'm excited my grandkids all over here this weekend, so, well, a whole house.
Merry Christmas to you.
Thank you. Um, the design of that Justice Center um remodel, they put these um hair handling units up where it's really hard to get to them, so we have to actually go through the suspended ceiling. And there's only about, there's all I found so far is one company that makes this lift that makes the box narrows down enough where it stands up and you can just take a panel out and go up right between the ceiling panels to um, servicing units. And um, the company I looked at last year was eighteen thousand something, and so I called them this year and they they uh no longer make that unit, so they recommend be going to this company because they had new one, so. We're needing this.
Any questions, Commissioner Hendricks?
Is this something that could be used at other facilities as well?
Um, yeah, we we can use it for, you know, replacing lights. What's nice about it, small enough maneuverable enough, you can go around desks and stuff where we have a bigger scissor lift type thing. This is actually a mask lift. It just goes off a mask, goes up. Um, and it'll go in between desks and easy to maneuver. And but it's rather expensive, too.
And those ceilings are pretty high over there, and over there a couple of times. It's a a long way up to get that, get to the equipment. Um, any other questions?
That is a comment. It says it's a mask-type lift?
Yes, yeah.
Is that? I don't know. That that's pretty high. You're putting on one, one mask. It would, I don't think it'd be as stable as a scissor lift, but.
The call phone you make, this is those, um, this is twenty-five, twenty footer, I believe. They make it twenty-five foot.
Well, whoever gets to operate it, tell them have fun.
Yeah, it'll be a little, yeah.
Any other commissioner comment? Any public comment? Then we'll move on to a motion for sixteen.
I did have one comment.
Oh, comment, Commissioner Keller?
So you're going up in between the panels? How far up and past the panels do you have to go?
Um, probably about four feet.
Not much at all to 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 get that.
Better, it's too, it's too tall ceilings to bring in a A-frame ladder, take, you know, A-frame ladder takes so much room to spread it out, plus trying to get it up in into the ceiling panels, so.
Unless you had a double door to bring it bigger lifting, but, okay, thank you.
Yeah. All right. Motion, or a motion to purchase this.
Um, I'm, I move that we approve the purchase of a scissor lift in the amount of twenty thousand six-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars for maintenance and service of the HVAC system and lighting at the Justice Complex with funding to come from the Public Safety Sales Tax.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion by Commissioner Hendricks and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Move on sixteen B for Possible Action Approve Relocation of Electrical Panel for the Dresser Park Wells into the well building in the amount of ten thousand six-hundred-and-seventy-six with funding coming from budget transfer from the general fund contingency.
The Homestead Facility Director for the record, um, we have a capital project. We have a capital project we're doing there right now that is to remove the old pressure tank, which we don't know how old it was, but it's probably from that wall to me long and we took a company to come in and cut it up in pieces to get it out of there. And it got so dangerous where we didn't even dare weld on anymore because it's springing leaks all over the place, so we're gonna go back now with a, like, four smaller pressure tanks and upgrade the well. And all that's included in the original capital improvement project. But what we're over there, Dayton Utilities has been helping us out, their electricians. And they said, you guys should really move those electrical panels inside the building. Because right now they're out on a pedestal out by the grass by the ball field. And he said, that's not really good on those electrical panels to be like that, so. We saw, yeah, that'd be good to do and we started checking the, it's probably, I don't know, probably about a hundred fifty feet or two hundred feet from where the panels are now to put into this building. And so with the, like, this is just materials. Dayton Utilities is helping the labor and we came out to ten thousand dollars and six hundred and seventy-six dollars. So it's a good time to do it, being we're doing it now. We're upgrading the well and this would be a good time to get some correct wiring in.
Questions? Other comment? Okay, and I agree with the project. Uh, so do I have a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I've moved that we approve the relocation of an electrical panel for Dressler Park wells into the well building in amount of ten thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars with funding to come from a budget transfer from the general fund contingency.
Okay.
A second.
All right, we've got a second by Commissioner Hendricks and a motion by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any? Okay, thank you, Commissioner Jacobson. We've got five zero on that one. Human Services for presentation, only presentation of the FY twenty-two dash twenty-three annual report by Lion County Human Services.
Good morning, Shayla Holmes, Director, Lion County Human Services for the record. We wanted to present to you today our annual award for fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-two to June thirty, twenty twenty-three. So keep in mind that those, the numbers that we're reporting to you on our successes are a little delayed from where we're at currently, but we'll do it again next year to capture the last few months too. That's okay, I'm gonna keep talking and you're gonna find it.
Wait, wait, where's, where's these balls?
For me? I am, I am not a part of this technical difficulty here. There we go, that looks like the right one. But it's not though.
So close.
Oh. Oh, good job. Yeah. Sharon, yeah. It's the department's purpose to meet the requirements of Nevada Reby Statutes, Chapter four, twenty-eight and two fifty-three. In order to meet this requirement, programs and services are designed to promote independence. It's the mission of the department to enhance the well-being of individuals and families across the lifespan. And it's our vision that all community members will be empowered, connected and supported. And it works. The only way that we're able to fulfill this mission and vision is through the amazing work of our staff. Human Services is a team of fifty-one, not including myself. And it's these people who come to work day in and day out to help the people in our communities. This work can be extremely difficult and taxing on the individual, both mentally and physically. And when asked why we do what we do, the answer is simple. We believe in people. This organizational chart is the current reflection of our teams and programs. It has grown a lot in my ten years since I started with the department. And since my directorship, we've added the far two right columns. We are now responsible for public guardianship and we have an amazing deputy who does that work. And within the last year, we were able to add a behavior health coordinator who is helping us move forward and how we respond. That individual is Todd Poswell. Uh, he's our most recent addition to the team and made possible in response to the opioid epidemic. Using opioid funds, this board allowed us to add a behavioral health coordinator, which has aided our department in having better best practices around identifying behavioral health, which includes substance misuse and mental health, which is a risk factor among many for opioid use disorder. This position's built by Todd. He's a licensed clinical professional counselor who has in such a short time since being with us helped us to apply and successfully become the Medicaid provider I shared earlier. And he's also helped us implement universal screening and aid us with building our department-wide database to be prepared for opioid data collection and Medicaid billing. This is a sort of like Josh's pie charts, but not as cool and extensive. But he did tell you already that a good portion of our department is funded by grants, so you can see just a slight majority. I think it's like forty-six percent is funded by grants. Um, it's really tiny, but I think that's us two point eight million-ish as compared to the county two point one million-ish. Um, Josh can tell you specifically. But um, the majority of that is grants and we are reliant upon grant funding, which is also part of the reason why we wanted to go down this Medicaid billing route to help stabilize our funding to ensure that we're able to continue to provide the same level of services as these grants fluctuate from year to year. Uh, those totals on the right are by state division. Those aren't actually individual awards. The amount of awards we receive are closer to probably thirty as opposed to the ten, I think, departments you see on there. And as we look at the divisions, you'll see a little bit further breakdown. Our Administrative Services Division is the blue that holds us all together. They are the logistics behind all of the work. Um, you'll see that seventy percent is county-funded. This has gone up just a little bit over last year. We did put a good amount of some COVID nineteen CDC funds to them that expired. And that was because they were doing a lot of the fielding of work for connecting folks to vaccines, testing sites, providing test kits at home and doing a lot of the referrals and information out to the general public as they call their office. This division is always going to be heavily county-funded because they handle the most of our grant management and grants do not allow you to apply to their funds the work to maintain the grant. They pay for the activity, but not for the management of the funds. So this, this one is always going to be heavier in our county tax rate. And then I just want to note that right now what you see is online referrals processed and individuals through our Family Resource Center. These are about on par with last year. However, I'm really excited that we implemented a database about at the beginning of this fiscal year, July one, we really started using it a hundred percent for all of our divisions. So we'll be able to report next year, not just on online referrals, but all activity coming in through the front office as well as online. So you'll see that number go up a little bit because our data collection has gotten better. This is our Children's Services Division. Uh, those are the grants that fund them and the numbers are about on par with last year, which is fabulous. But what I want to note is that the cases that they're seeing are more complex. This division is seeing more and more youth with complex and severe mental illness, which is far more difficult to help the family work through. So cases are being opened longer and we're having to invest more time into the families that are coming into this division. So the fact that they've increased the amount of time with families, but provided the same service level is quite amazing for them. Next up, we've got our Adult Services Division. What I want to highlight on this slide is our, uh, housing stabilization number is at, I think it was six hundred and ten individuals obtained housing stabilization. So those are actual individuals that had, not, not the number of people who came in needing help, but the number we were successful at aiding with either preventing eviction or by helping them go from homeless to housed. And that number has gone up by about a hundred over last year. So even in this really tough, affordable housing market, we've been able to help a hundred more folks this year be stable in their housing, either maintain it or get housed. Um, the other one thing I want to point out. Um, I'm not sure what the trend is. It's interesting coming far post-COVID, but our indigent cremation went up from eight last year to forty this year. So we've got a lot more indigent folks that we are responsible for paying for their cremation or burial services dying. Um, so with that, we've edited a lot of our processes internally to share the love. It's no longer going to be just housing and adult services, but also within senior services. Uh, that way more staff can handle these cases and we've also adjusted them a little bit to work better with the public administrators. We don't have bodies hanging out on ice for an extended period of time while we're trying to identify that they're indigent and that they don't have assets. Senior Services is pretty awesome to see. Our meals are about on par with the last year, which is good. Transportation has increased by almost a thousand rides. And what's awesome also about transportation is that now we're seeing it doubled to our, for our post-COVID year. And we doubled the drivers. We've increased our grant funding to that. So we're really, we, we increased the driver and then we hit COVID, so we had a slowdown in transportation. So we were really excited to see that now the doubled grant funds are actually equally doubled rides since our, our post-COVID year. I also want to note that our case management and Nevada Care Connection numbers have also almost in, doubled, increased by nearly fifty percent. Um, and that's still just two staff members doing that. And those are the services that go into the home or help older adults get connected to the variety of different benefits they're eligible for, one of which is new to us, but we're now in our second year, so we're excited to share that we were able to help in its first year. Uh, forty-five individuals get handyman services. So we're helping older adults get repairs to their home to help them stay stable longer in their home here in Lion County. Lastly, I just want to share with you public guardianship. Um, this is a mighty team of one, our Deputy Debbie Stevens. Uh, right now we have a few more than sixteen existing cases, but for this fiscal year, she had sixteen folks that she cared for and fourteen of them, it was for their medical well-being and also for their finances and only two of them for their finances. So fourteen of those folks, she cares for them in pretty much every way possible. Um, in ensuring that they have the services necessary, that they're in long-term care placement, they're getting quality long-term care placement, all of their bills are paid on time and that we're making solid medical decisions based on what the professionals are recommending. So it's quite the workload and she does an amazing job. And that wraps up my annual report for you. You guys have the actual report and PDF file as a part of it. There's a little bit more information in there as far as some other activities we participated in over the year, but that is the cut and drive it.
Thank you for an excellent report, Commissioners.
Thank you for all you do.
Ditto.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. You do a phenomenal job.
Chairman Hockaday?
Yes, Commissioner Jacobson, I was waiting for your comment.
I just want to, I just want to thank Shayla Holmes and all of our crew for all they've done for our seniors, kids, um, emergency support, et cetera. Your department, you guys do a wonderful job. Wish you all a Merry Christmas.
Yes, they do a wonderful job and thank you, Commissioner Jacobson, for restating that succinctly. Um, we're going to move on then to eighteen A for possible action, approve a contract with Resource Concept Inc. For an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand for on-call watershed management professional services related to the USGS survey of the Middle Carson River Basin groundwater flow model and the Carson River Watershed Regional Drought and Water Sustainability Plan update.
Chairman Hockaday, Commissioners, David Burkett for the record, Merry Christmas. Um, I cannot talk as fast as Shayla, so we'll, we'll get through this though. Um, so what this is related to is they're going to provide some professional services for us uh, associated with the river. The USGS is doing the model update on what they call the Middle Carson River. And so they're using some specialized software, modular software and RCI will be working as a subconsultant to make sure that the inputs and the outputs of that model um, you know, uh, are fully understood because that's going to be used uh, quite a bit in the next upcoming years and some stuff that's going on with the Carson River. Um, so they'll provide the professional level services for that. Additionally, their subconservancy right now is doing an update to their sustainability plan. So again, they'll provide some guidance and direction on that. Because really where this is going over the next three years is, you know, there's going to be a capture model study done. Um, you had a joint meeting with the city of Fernley here about a year ago. And you know, that's going to be really important if we understand all those inputs that go into it with water rights and everything that's happening on the Carson River. So this is providing that professional level support for that as we move into the next three years. So with that, I'd be happy to answer the questions you have.
Questions? No questions from Commissioners, anything from the public? No input from the public, then we will look for a motion, this amount of money.
A move that we approve a contract with Resource Concepts Incorporated for an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars for on-call watershed management professional services related to the USGS survey of the Middle Carson River Basin groundwater flow model and Carson River Watershed Regional Drought and Water Sustainability Plan update.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hendricks and a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Eighteen B for possible action, approve contract with Loomis and Associates for an amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and ten dollars for surveying, geotechnical and engineering design services for the Highway Fifty Sewer Replacement Project Phase Two in Dayton.
David Burkett for the record. So I'm glad to say that this project is finally moving forward. We finished phase one at the end of twenty twenty-one. We tried to secure a couple of permits. We were successful in getting those permits. It just, easements, not permits, sorry. Um, and it took, you know, a couple of years to finally get those. So this is the sewer replacement that we'll be doing off of Highway fifty in front of Dayton Valley Road. In June of this year, we did an SOQ list, a statement qualification list for qualifying learning firms to do this work. Um, the review committee listed, um, uh, you know, this firm as, as being one of the qualified firms. So we went out to them, negotiated the price. And this is to get us ready through the bid services process. So they'll do the design assistance with permitting and get us through the bid services process of this.
Questions? Public comment? Seeing none, uh, motion for eighteen B?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a contract with Loomis and Associates for an amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and ten dollars for survey and geotechnical and engineering design services for the Highway Fifty Sewer Replacement Project Phase Two in Dayton.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. County Manager nineteen A for possible action, authorize and select county commissioners and county manager to attend the twenty twenty-four NACO Legislative Conference in Washington DC, February tenth through the thirteenth for approximate cost of four thousand per person. This was a request for the agenda by Commissioner Henderson. Go ahead.
Andrew Haskin, Lion County Manager, for the record. Yeah, so the, it's that time of year again, the NACO Legislative Conference is coming up. Commissioner Henderson had requested an agenda item at the last meeting to discuss which Commissioners would like to attend and get, get that going. You, you do remember that we, we did budget for this in the last budget cycle, so we put enough that each Commissioner could attend if they wanted to. Excuse me, I have to go back on the, on the budget amount. Mr. Foley is saying there's ten thousand left in that budget, so. Oh, okay.
It's safe.
Okay.
Question, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Didn't we have a separate account for the county manager to travel?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I thought, I thought we did that.
Go to
this final break.
Actually, if you could go to the next item, which is agenda requests and
Yeah, let's go. Skip over to item twenty, agenda requests. Any requests?
Yes.
No.
Commissioner Henderson has a request.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to have an agenda item to discuss the Mount House Community Center. What we actually want to do with that and financing options to actually get it done. What we actually want to do with that and financing options to actually get it done. And then there's a couple other agenda requests I made earlier that I'd like to see on the agenda sometime soon.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Jacobson, while we're waiting, any agenda requests?
None at this time, Chairman Hockaday.
Thank you, sir. All right. You've got all that. Then we'll move to twenty-one while we're waiting. And any Commissioner comments? Commissioner Keller?
Just like to thank staff and, and elected people out there. You guys did a great job and thank you for the good year.
Thank you. Commissioner Hendricks.
I'd like to just thank everyone, all of the staff and for all the work that they put in this year. It's been very productive year and wish everybody Merry Christmas.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I too like to thank our staff. We have the best staff in the state. You know, I haven't met anyone here that's here for a paycheck. You know, which is good because we don't pay them. Not what we should. But yes, thank you guys very much and we appreciate all the work you do. I like for the county, but more importantly for the people that live in the county and the work here. And also like to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. I'd like to wish the absolutely wonderful county staff, fellow commissioners and the citizens of Lyon County a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobson. I'll save mine for after this. Go ahead.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Go.
No, that's all right. Go ahead. I'll wrap it up here pretty quick.
You might mention we're going back to nineteen.
Okay, we're back to nineteen for possible action authorizing select county commissioner and county manager to attend the twenty twenty-four Naco Legislative Conference in Washington DC, February tenth through thirteen for approximate cost of four thousand per person.
All right, Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager for the record. So we did get some clarification on that. On how much budget was left. So in the county manager budget, there's about seventy-four hundred dollars left. And then in the Commissioner budget, there's twenty-one thousand left. And that does include trips back and forth and other, other trips as well. So that was yes.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Controller, just to clarify on the Commissioners, when you submit your mileage reimbursements for coming, all the different meetings, whoever puts those in, we need to subtract the amount of that for this year before we figure out what we have available for these second trips as well. I would anticipate probably somewhere around four to five thousand that would be Commissioner traveling.
Eight forty-five thousand?
Four two five, sorry.
All right, thanks. All right. Yeah, I was going to say, where's that money coming from? All right, any comments then, Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think you guys all know my position on our participation in National Association of Counties events. However, I do not plan on attending this one. I, and one reason why is because I know we're going to have a separate trip back to DC at some point. I mean, it was our delegation about our funding request, other stuff. So I'm going to defer on this one, but I do think it's important that, 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 you know, at least a couple of our Commissioners and, and the County Manager go. So, but I will bow out of this one.
Commissioner Keller?
I plan on attending. I'd like to go and I think it's something that's very important to this county.
I would like to go as well.
Commissioner Jacobson, any comments?
Thank you. I had to wait to get unmuted there, Chairman Hockaday. I will be voting nay if we vote to send more than two Commissioners. I don't believe we should send a quorum to these conferences. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. My comments would be, I'm unsure of my schedule now in February. So I'm going to have to say that I probably should not throw my name in the hat right now to go. We'll see how things go in the next week or so. So having said that, it looks like we have two volunteers to head back to DC. Just reminder that the neighborhood commissioner back from DC had made a comment on the news that she said nobody should come to DC. It's too dangerous. Well, they had like several people attacked and it didn't get in the news for a month. The fact that they were having attacks. So I'm just saying the Commissioners that go back there, please be very careful. So at this point, we have two volunteers to head back there. I think that would be great. Plus, I definitely believe the County Manager needs to go. He was very successful last time. So I'm very much supportive of him going again and continuing his excellent work back there to get us some funds. So with that, it looks like we may have Commissioner Keller and Commissioner Hendricks volunteering to go and County Manager Andrew Haskin. That's kind of a motion that I'd be looking at for this. Well, I would like a motion if someone wants to make it, otherwise you can count.
I'll make a motion, but I want clarification. Do you want the option for you to be possibly if you're, if it changes?
Not at this time. No. It's, yeah, I just that's too uncertain as to what I'm going to be doing in February.
Okay, I'll make a motion that Scott Keller, Danny Hendricks and Andrew Haskin attend the national, what's it called?
Association of Counties.
Naco Legislative Meeting. Counsel.
I'll second that.
All right. Commissioner Keller and Commissioner Henderson. So motion by Keller, second by Henderson. And I didn't, before I take a vote, I didn't see if there's any public comment. I had seen none, then I will ask for a vote on this one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those in opposed? Motion passes. And I think Commissioner Jacobson said he was for two, but not more. So I believe that was a probably a aye for him. We have finished up down to Commissioner comments. I just wanted to thank everybody. It's been a challenging year. I want to thank everybody for all their hard work. County employees have done super. The staff has done fantastic. They've been a big help to me over this year as the chair. I definitely look forward to working with you again next year. So, and that's coming up fast. Final public participation, no action to be taken on any item until this properly agenda is anticipated. The public participation we held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation or ask to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. Board will conduct public comment after discussion each item. But before the board takes action, I don't see any other final public participation other than, okay, oh, okay, sir. Yes. Waiting patiently.
Good afternoon. My name is Jim Davis. I'm a resident of Dayton. My wife and I, last year, fled California and are pleased and thrilled to be here in rural Lyon County. I am looking into applying for the Dayton Regional Advisory Board position. And I thought I should attend at least one county board meeting before I applied and introduce myself to you. So I appreciate your, your time here today. And I expect probably in the next few weeks, I'll be submitting that application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here.
Can we get him an application now?
Yeah. It's in the works. Do we have a closed session? I would hope.
No closed session today.
Oh, yay. Okay, then I am going to say at twelve oh eight, we are adjourned.